All right, we're limited. Step down the stairs is underway, so we'll go ahead and get started. So this time I'll call our special call meeting scheduled for a day to order. I think we still technically need to adopt the agenda. That is one of the things we do. Everybody's had just now the chance to look at, are there any corrections, changes that need to be made? If not, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Have a motion here, second.
Second.
I'll say all in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Uh, like I said, welcome everyone here, special media. You're always welcome. We're glad to see everybody out in this morning. I stepped on my front step this morning thinking it should be. I see, and just about made the acquaintance, my rear about made the acquaintance of everything, which was not doing good, so there we go. Um, before we get into the agenda, Chris, was there anything that you, any updates, anything that you needed?
Okay.
We'll go from there. Personal personnel, I'm assuming, assuming we need to go ahead and vote on that, correct?
Correct.
As far as acceptance.
Yes.
First item is one change, Mr. Turner, here it looks like he's in the Academy of Transferring to Mountain View Intermediate. Do I hear a motion that we accept, recommend the change?
Thank you.
Motion here, second.
Thank you.
Have a motion, say all in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Differentiate, differentiated pay plan, I get it out, too many Ps and whatever in there. Dr. Baldwin or you, Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, there's been more. As you will recall, back in September, I made you aware that it looked like the General Assembly was going to require us to submit some sort of pay for performance plan for teachers. In response to that request, we've had committee meetings and developed a Macon County Schools differentiated pay plan. There was considerable concern about developing a pay for performance plan or a differentiated pay plan based on some of these items that are noted here in 1 through 5 at the beginning of the document. We felt like it was important to note our concerns with some sort of a pay for performance plan. But having said that, we do still appreciate the opportunity to come up with a pay plan that is ours as opposed to something that the General Assembly or someone else comes up with. So we're going to submit, we asked that the board approves this for submission, and it's based on two main things. The first thing being hard to staff positions for schools. What we'd offer is a $1,500 signing bonus for middle, secondary math, middle and secondary science, and et cetera children. Also consideration for our A-12 schools and alternative schools.
This is a change from what we looked at. That's me correct, this is new?
It's not a change, we've, we've updated it, added, added more explanation, but it's still $1,500 for those positions, and that's, that's what we talked about.
Thank you, I couldn't remember, I didn't remember that part.
The second part is based on performance. And basically what we would, we did change this a little bit in terms of wording, but it still refers back to the Educator Value Added Assessment System, or EVOs. And what we changed, originally we had set a dollar amount, but since we were not sure what, how much the state's going to have available to offer these bonuses, we took that wording out and just said that each school in Macon County that exceeds growth would receive a portion of that amount set aside by the state. And then the school improvement team would decide how those bonuses are dispersed within the school. With finally implementation of that plan coming from a majority vote by the faculty, so in other words, the school improvement team would come up with a plan, the faculty has to approve it by majority vote before the, the plan is actually implemented. Number two refers to a school that meets academic growth based on EVOs, they would receive 25 less per student than a school exceeding growth, but the parameters are the same. The committee also felt like it was important that within this plan, we state that, that it needs to be equal across job description so that we don't have the school improvement team, we don't put the school improvement teams in a position to say, well, this teacher or this custodian or whatever, they decide, however they decide to do that, we receive more or less than another. We felt like it should be equal across the job descriptions, in other words, all the teachers receive the same amount, all the assistants receive the same amount, all the custodians, secretaries and that sort of thing receive the same amount. And then the final point there is alternative school teachers would be included in the performance-based salary bonuses based upon the homeschool their students. In other words, a, for the intensive purposes of this plan, Union Academies high school teachers would be included with Franklin High School's plan, Union Academies Macon, or middle school students would be included in Macon Middle School's plan. So they would, they would receive bonuses if Macon Middle School receives bonuses or if Franklin High School receives bonuses. And just remind the board that we'll be, we're requesting permission to submit this plan, but it's, the, the state's going to select, I believe it's 16 districts throughout the state to set up pilots. John, do you know if that's, if that number's right, is it 16?
I believe that's still a sudden plan. Uh, I was going to ask if you had heard any update about how much funding is actually available for that, because I, there's a million dollars and that's all they have.
Well, what I heard was, what I heard was that they had the 10 million that was set aside for the 25% last year, they're going to use that, and there was 3 billion from another pot.
Okay.
But still between 16 districts, that's, that's not a lot of money.
No, it's really not. And so that's just one thing I think the board ought to keep in mind is that we're really not clear where the state is going to let anybody go with this, even if we are selected as one of those pilot programs. Everybody's going to have to wait and see what, you know, what this thing looks like at the end of the day.
115 districts, 16 districts are going to be selected for a pilot and they're going to have about maybe $13 million to work with.
I assume that it will be based, the differential will be based on school size, ADM, correct? That how they'll determine the amount that goes each system?
Well, and that's, we don't know.
Don't know yet. Anyway, get your name in the box. Potentially be able to have access to the funds, so if nothing else.
I will also say, it's not entirely clear that you can spread this funding out among an entire school because it's a teacher pay plan that, that's what, that's what the possession law calls for. It doesn't necessarily say, now, a lot of districts are doing the same thing, and I think it is a good approach to say, if a school makes, you know, is making expected growth, the better, we're going to reward this school. But how that will actually play out about what, who will be able to actually fund these bonuses with, we'll have to see.
Well, and that's a good point, John, and I, I think that we left the wording ambiguous enough so that we could, it could be limited in addition if the state says that's what we need to do. And we noted, if you'll notice, in the performance-based salary increases, the first sentence there says, "The Macon County School System strongly believes that student achievement can best be accomplished when all school employees work together as a team." Coach, I think you have a question?
Uh, that kind of clarifies, that's what we're shooting for, but if they mandate it has to be just the teachers, then we're ready to go that way, but we're ready to do this locally if we don't get that mandate.
Exactly. Well, I think we'd be covered to do that, wouldn't we, John, if, if our plan says this is what we're doing, and they, and they don't question it, and they issue us the funds, and funds are submitted, and we have that leeway to do that. Would you think that, am I right when I say that?
I believe so.
We're limited to the total of ten, so it may not, may not necessarily all go to teachers, and for the media's listeners, please understand, I'm not, I'm not pushing it, I think that teachers, I'm probably for, give it to everybody, but I, I would, my only concern is that. If they, I still have a little concern about the wording, which says performance pay for teachers, and even though we've done everything, we're allowed on, and we're, we're, we're not going to, if this is a plan we submit, I guess my ass is.
Very direct to it, then take one.
That's what I'm saying.
Our problem.
Right.
I believe that's right.
Good, good deal. If that's the case, my little cautious nature rare is to step up. Any other questions of the board? I want to thank whoever served on, put this together, Chris.
It was principals and school improvement team chair.
It's been a lot of work, a lot of thought, so please pass on our appreciation for doing that.
I will.
You have a question?
How was their reaction? So they're, they're behind the way we were thinking that night.
The school improvement teams?
Yeah, to spread it out among everyone, was there any assistance?
Yeah, oh no.
Okay, good, so teachers were good.
That's your word.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Good.
That's good.
Okay. And when I say that, I talk about the school, the chairs, school improvement team chairs, that's something we need.
We're including the difference pay plan step, if you want to, we're glad you made it, I'm assuming it was, you had the fog coming down, didn't you? Little fog?
Little fog, a little traffic, and a little bit of drama on the phone, just, I'm fine. All right, I'm with you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Instead of time, just, I know she's actually reading over, but basically this is a plan we're talking about submitting.
Okay.
I think we've never, we talked about, about trying to get our name in the hat, or possible, first enough, but sure the amount, but getting things better than nothing, so we're settled.
Absolutely.
No other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So move, accept the motion.
As presented, we have a motion to accept the difference pay plan as presented, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So moved.
Very good. Injury and loss prevention policy, Mr. Hannity, is this going to be a first reading of this? Is that going to be a first one, Robert? What does that mean?
It doesn't, it doesn't need to be, and I know this is, this is hitting everybody a little bit cold since it's, we haven't had any discussion about it, and we are not required to have this in place until March 31st, so we've got time to have a first reading in, at your regular January meeting and proceed from there. So that's what I suggested we do, I just wanted to give everybody a chance to know what this was, see it coming, and see if there are any questions about it. The, in a nutshell, this issue is, the, the state has been looking at how much their expenditures are for workers' comp claims. I assume everybody's familiar with workers' comp. Workers' comp is a system whereby instead of employers facing liability for unlimited amounts, that could be anything that somebody could sue in negligence for, we have a system that says, no, if you're on the job and you get injured, then your on-the-job injury is paid for through this workers' comp system. School districts employees that are state-funded, those type claims are covered by the state. Our locally funded employees, we actually are directly liable for, for their workers' comp claims. But at any rate, the state has been looking at how much they have been paying on those workers' comp claims, and in the last year, something around $50 million. And had studied the fact that school districts don't have adequate systems in place to verify what happens when there is an accident or investigate unsafe conditions that lead, that lead to accidents on the work, on the worksite. So we are now mandated by state board policy, district has to have a policy along these lines. This is a modified version of what the School Boards Association has suggested, that I've taken some modifications that were slight changes from other districts. This is a proposed system that would create a district-level team that would get, devise a system to get reports from the schools about hazardous conditions, try to fix them before there's any injury, or when there are injuries, find out what happened and why. If you happen to answer any questions you have about it, again, it's just a, this is just a preview of coming events.
So I'm trying to follow you here because, you know, and I am very familiar with workers' comp rate a lot.
Yes.
But, so what you're, they're basically doing is trying to, which should be in place at all times anyway, is trying to stop the accidents from happening, and then even if the accident happens, you're trying to do a little more research on it and find out why, is that what, the bottom line is what you're trying to do?
Yes, because, I mean, I think the idea is not to, about investigation of what happened, the idea is, let's not let this, if there's a condition we can fix, let's find out as a district what it is, make sure it gets fixed, we don't have a future, another injury related to another comp claim because of it.
And that's something that we do on a pretty regular basis, whether it's something that Tracy's needing to keep safety, or, I mean, we're doing this on a regular basis anyway, or, or, is that correct?
I think we're, yes, and I don't, nothing, this, this policy doesn't mean to imply that we haven't been doing this anyway.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to follow them.
Now they have explicitly said, the state board is now requiring us to have a policy in place by the end of March that spells out, there's a district team that is to receive these reports, you know, the superintendents did create it, they're going to receive these reports and to go do investigation of injuries when they happen.
All because, I mean, basically they're trying to cut that cost down, which is, you know, a great thing to be doing anyway. So we carry that workers' comp on our, on our locally funded people.
Correct.
And then we have workers' comp claim, does that come through this, the central office, or do you just directly do it with the insurance, you guys deal with it here?
If it's a state-funded employee, they, there is a, the Department of Justice essentially handles the lawyering of it, and there's a corporation called Court of Owls, and I guess they're an agency that does sort of the paperwork into things, sort of the claim adjustment.
But when you get one, I guess it probably comes to Terry first, you get one, I mean, you kind of research it first, because I mean, these things may not even have happened on, within your school system or something, right? I mean, you do your own research before it goes further, is that correct?
Right, anyone who's going to file one, they, they come to our office and they have to give, give us the particulars, just the, the event that happened that, that causes the problem, so we verify that before we file the claim.
Okay, so again, what I'm trying to find out, John, is what are you changing from what you're doing now? You're just maybe putting someone else in place to, to follow through on this a little more rigorously, is that what you're doing?
Well, the board's required to adopt a policy, which that's never been required in law or state board policy anywhere before. But now, our board has to adopt a policy that says, here's, superintendent's directed to create this team that will be people who investigate workers' comp claims.
Okay, so basically we're not changing anything, we're putting a policy in place.
This is possible, also suffice OSHA reform, true, John.
Yes.
I had this from OSHA, back about 2007 or so, I had OSHA come in, because we had several claims that year, so they came in to investigate. And this would pretty much satisfy the, an OSHA investigator to see that we have a policy, we have a team in place, and we're doing it on this.
And I will also tell you that, that when the General Assembly keeps looking at things that they might hatchet out of the budget each year, that's been, this has been one that's been on the table, is, is it would make each district responsible for workers' comp claims, whether they were state-funded positions or not. And if they ever did that, if we would, it would be in our best interest to have this kind of thing in place before that anyway. And I hope they never do that, and they may not, but.
Well, then you'd have to vary the insurance on it to make that possible.
Everybody.
For everybody, right. Actually, I think this is, I hate policies, because I think this actually would help protect us also, if we did not, or a claim discriminatory, whatever, and handling that, we have a provision of order place, say this is how we're going to do every one of those, and if we follow that, it should actually help protect us.
Yes, and we do, since we are responsible for the locally funded positions that we have, and their workers' comp claims, we do have some exposure on this anyway, and it does have to have some, you know, have to have procedures in place to evaluate those to, this will apply to this.
So according to what Mr. Bell was saying, we're not starting from scratch anyway. We've done pretty good.
We've had, I think.
Policy and processes already in place.
We just, we handled it, I think, very well for that, we just never had a policy. Now, we're being required to have a formal policy in place, that's what we've got to do. My suggestion would be, let's table it, let everybody read it over, then we'll, we'll look at it at the next board meeting, and we give everybody a chance and questions, and then we'll adopt it at that time. Does that meet everybody's approval?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. All right, John, any other questions while we still got John, though? Any questions while we're thinking about it?
Any of you come up with any in the meantime?
Very good. Moving on, change in IRS mileage rate?
This is just a memo we receive annually, usually from the Office of State Budget Management and their change, and the reimbursement rate for mileage from 56 cents per mile to 57.5 cents a mile. And we usually reimburse in line with 0.8.
We'll table, we just lost this, correct? So we have a proposal, this is what they're doing, our rate for mileage, we increased from 56 to 57.5.
Make a motion to adopt the representation, and you said from 56 to 57.5%.
Have a motion, have a motion to increase the rate, do I hear a second?
Thank you.
Want to take any other discussion? All in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Focus to lighting funds.
Mr. Chairman, you were doing, in your package, you have Western North Carolina Forest Your Education LLC memorandum, and basically this is a memorandum of understanding and acceptance, and it's based on the General Assembly's budget back in the summer. They appropriated an amount to be divided between 17 eligible counties of Western North Carolina to be used for lighting upgrades. Macon County's portion of that is $21,800, and just letting you know that we've entered into a memorandum, memorandum of understanding for the use of those funds.
Oh, what are you doing, changing them to LEDs, but are you not changing them until they need it, right? I mean, you're not?
Well, we're considering changing them to LEDs and also considering changing to go from T-11s to T-8, is it T-12s or?
T-12s.
T-12s to T-8s.
And we're not sure yet in which direction we're going to go, but at this point, we just found out last, last Friday that Monday was planned, and then Tracy and I were going to do an investigation into what draft is best. We pretty much have targeted, we pretty much targeted Macon Middle School, Macon Middle School was built in 77, it's got T-12 bugs in the original building, and what, if you're familiar with it, it's seven, eighth, well, it was the seventh and eighth grade wings, and there's where we can, again, we probably cost double that to relamp the whole building so we can do height of building with this.
If you'll notice in your, if you remember from the capitalization budget document, we actually had $40,000 put out in our request to upgrade lighting in Macon Middle School, so this will help towards that.
My understanding of this is that the energy savings are so compelling that you don't wait to, you know, wait till they do this on an asated basis, it's worth going ahead and.
Right. We can do, we can do the work ourselves, so we can use the $21,000 on our district by the fixtures themselves, and Tracy's men can, can do the actual work and.
I don't know if you touched on, Mr. Bell, but T-12s are no longer available, are they?
No, they're on the mountain now.
Yeah, they're facing a mountain, and, um, top of Duke Energy, there's also going, I'm going to work with Duke Energy in this plan, and there are some incentives that we can get from Duke Energy also out of this, so we'll do a little bit more of that. And also LT Ward, who is, is the third-party administrator for the legislature, this, these funds, said that it is his hope that when they go back in session, that they may appropriate again, and we may get more money, and it's coming here, so that, in, in doing so, that $40,000 that we had played in the proposal to you all, then we would take that, we would pull that back, use as 21.8, and wait in the next budget cycle, sit and do again, but that way you would not have to request that money.
Sure, maybe off, doesn't, did offer program to be able to purchase lighting some way, or, have you told y'all base, have you heard of that?
Well, you know, I, I thought so, I thought, actually, I have you contacted Duke Energy, they're really hot, they've been really helpful.
Okay.
And he didn't indicate that, he, he did, he told me that in submitting our proposal that they asked for, that he could, once we decided which draft we're going to go, what we're going to use, then he could tell us exactly what our energy savings would be, the proposal, incentive for this, and then he said he would, that there would be some incentive money.
I'm sure you'll write that.
If we could recoup back from Duke Energy, and this is what we're getting here from the legislature, so it's all good.
Well, I'm sure you'll let it through, he'll let us know about it if you're happy. That's good, we'll take it. Any questions, with Dr. Baldwin or Mr. Bell? Not move on, capital day priorities, QZAP update, Dr. Baldwin?
Mr. Bell, you want to speak to that? Mr. Bell called, sorry.
We called down there just to, basically, the, the big question was, could we bundle more than one location in one package? And the answer we got was that we have to keep them separate, but we could do the actual financing in a bunch. And so I, and I was looking at the Union project, and I was looking at the Highlands project, and at that time, we're talking about relighting, but relighting, we, we have to decide what we can make about that. So basically, that's it, I've got the application here for QZAP.
Mr. Bell asked if we could bundle our QZAP bonds that we're paying off right now with these bonds, and that was nothing.
No.
I think they're timed to some kind of tax advantage that runs out of this specific.
And is there a advantage to us to do that?
These are for bundling? Um, the advantage, I think, is just being simplified.
Just simplified, the, he did, what was it, the, 13 million?
13 million left.
13 million left.
That's good.
And he said, it's on a first come, first served basis, he said, you want 13 billion, get your stuff in.
Now, I will say that at the end of the year, last year, we looked at it, there was 9 million left in the pot at that time, so, now many school systems are applying for it on there.
This will all expire this December 31st, 2015, the money will just evaporate. He does not foresee that there will be any additional money, money beyond 2015.
So you plan to request for those two projects?
Well, that'd be, that'd be your request to the commissioners if you so decide to do that.
Yeah, I would certainly.
I've got a union school breakdown that we did, this thing's about 18 months old. The Union project was about 1.5 million, and Tim was looking over my shoulder a minute ago and said, where's your low voltage wiring in this plan? And I, you don't know that, but we'd have to add low voltage, that means all your computer internet wiring needs to be put into this plan. It wouldn't change a whole lot.
Now, there was, there is something in there, Mr. Bell, I noticed that. I'm asking exactly what that is.
What, add a circuit, each particular?
Um, there was a, was it MDP panel?
That's it.
MDP panels.
That's, that's electric.
It's a main distribution panel.
It has a main distribution panel.
What is that?
Power.
Power.
Just a breaker box?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's what those are, and, of course, up there, it's kind of a hodge card, just those 1952 up until probably recent times, it's been added in there by, by maintenance and by other projects that have gone on there, so we just solve that, the panels.
If, one of the things that came out of our liaison committee, meeting, what was that, last week? Last week, when I was fifth, commissioners asked that we pull Union out of our overall request and make that separate request, and you can see that on the last page. What I've done there is two things, I've, if you recall, Ms. Cotton made some capital lay requests, and I think Tracy was part of that, that's the first things up there, Union Academy capital lay request, that's what she requested, and that amount came to about $750,000 estimate. And the complete renovation of Union Academy, which includes other things that probably need to be done before you can actually make the upgrades that Ms. Cotton said they've requested, that came to about 1.5 million dollars. And from what I'm hearing from Mr. Bell and Mr. Bell.
It's going to be a whole lot more, these, these estimates, I did, like I said, about 18 months ago, I did them, Mike Watson definitely with these, these were based on the prices that we, we were renovating Highlands Elementary Wing, so that's how we came up with all the numbers that you see. One thing I will point out, and Tracy pointed this out to me earlier, I don't think that low voltage wiring. low voltage wiring is going to jack this up very, very level because if any, because in the mechanical plumbing, that's on page 10, it's $50,000 in mechanical plumbing that had been for the heat piping. We would not be doing that heat piping because we are going to heat pumps, individual heat pumps in, in the building and eliminate the board. We no longer can use the board and require piping. Is that right? Tracy correct? So that $50,000 there could be probably converted and that might be enough to cover low voltage wiring. So I don't think it's going to change the final numbers you see there much. Again, though, I caution you that these numbers are based on 18 months ago when we were doing Highlands School.
And that's why, that's why I started that, just for more information, as asked, because that is a, it's detailed, but it's still 18 months old.
ECA Intermediate School is being built in Buncombe County at the price per square foot of, that came in a lot, probably more than what we just built Iola Bar in MBI. So construction costs has risen some now with the improving economy, which you expect.
Any questions about the QZAP application and Union Academy or Highlands renovation?
So what do we do, what do we need to do to, he said that we're throwing the reward to find out whether, you know, to request the Highlands? I mean, speaking of helping ongoing costs, I mean Highlands High School is, I mean, you've still got duct tape around air conditioners. I mean, that's an ongoing thing that, I mean, it, it, to be upgraded like the elementary.
But we'd have to have approval from the mechanic commissioner to move forward with this. And then once we have that permission, then we apply for the QZAP. We have to have the in-kind match. I'm sure you remember that from.
Which I'm certain we could get again.
Well, I think you probably already have it.
Probably already have it, yeah.
Okay. So what is our accept? Can we?
Your request to the county.
Any questions, Mr. Bell? The in-kind donation. If we're bundling this, can you use, I know we've had some very generous benefactors in Highlands and I'm very impressed on what they're doing up there. Would that stand for all of the QZAP out or would we just have additional for increasing it here in Franklin? Or are we going to do separately?
Well, I think the way they said, it'd be two separate projects.
Two separate projects.
Sounds like you'd have to find the in-kind match to qualify for each of them.
For each of them, you couldn't.
At the end of the day, all we get out of it is a bundling. But this, and this is significant, but you would reduce your cost by doing one D to trust, one financing agreement.
Y'all gave an answer, I didn't. I'm hoping that wasn't the case.
We changed, I know that. I know when we did the QZAP the last time, we had that separate in-kind match for Highlands and for Nana Highland.
Let me ask you this, Terry. I'm curious about the fact that, I understand that they wouldn't let us just refinance the existing QZAP light on Highlands into a new one that's at Highlands, which I, I see why that would be, but that also means that the new, if you did a new QZAP project, well, one is not satisfied in, for that school property. Then that lender is taking a second mortgage. Do they, maybe they don't care. I don't know.
I don't, I don't have that.
We'll have to make sure they'll do that.
But we've done a lot of QZAP loans, loan, loan, that's right. Frank High School.
But I don't know.
Frank High School was paid for out of local money.
Was it?
Yeah, there's no QZAP money for Frank High School.
But did we do any on the same property when there already was one in place?
Good question.
So I think we need to make sure.
That's a good question. The answer, I don't know if I'll find that.
We take the step to put together a request from the county for QZAP. We would need to pinpoint our figures much closer. If I correct where I'm wrong, you're indicating to me that you're afraid that the cost is going to be higher and this, we have, this is 18 months old as far as estimation of cost is correct. So I think before we take any action to, obviously I think we should look at doing it before we do. I think we ought to make sure we're requesting the amount we're going to need. I don't want to get into the project and leave it half done, half done. And then suddenly, oh, we have, by the way, we're this much short. I don't think we want to get approached that. So I guess I'm looking at boards, should we, there's enough interest, we'd like Mr. Bell and them to approach it that way, get us final cost pending the submission of a possible QZAP request to the county commissioners.
Well, they're not going to just give it to us. That's what made them feel good before, when I had that deal here or something. Yeah. Got them something.
I don't think we need to make that a formal motion when we count. It's correct, Mr. Bell. Basically, they would then to put this on, for us and try to come up with some figures for us quick as possible, update it and we'll address it once we have the data for us.
We also need to check on, in a second.
Yeah, Terry's going to look into that for us. Get our heads together. We also need to look at the, I think we have a capital aid priority request coming up and this is a little bit different form, Dr. Baldwin, what we've done in the past, correct?
Yeah, and before we leave the academy, let me just point out that if you recall from the original request, there were some items like she had requested, the new, four new classrooms, I believe it was. I took those off because they would not apply to a QZAP fund because outside the current footprint of the building. So there, there are some changes in her written request, but it's based on application for the QZAP. And going back to your question, yes, what we have here with this, this current document, previously we had separated the requests by school. If you remember from the last, the liaison of the previous, actually the previous schoolwork session, Mr. Shields was here and he suggested that we, we change the format of the request to reflect the way that Angie actually submits the, the re- to the county. And those are renovation, construction, furniture, machines and equipment, and vehicles. We did that, but we've also noted the school, each school's request out front of that request. You'll notice that first rubber, second multiple playground, that's Cartoon J Elementary. I'd ask you to note that anything that's in green, it's a, it's a request from the school, but it's something that our maintenance crew can complete. So we've notated that. Need to point out though, that maintenance needs those funds in order to complete those tasks. The other thing I'd ask you to note is that anything that's highlighted in yellow is a request that we made last year and we identified as a priority, but it wasn't funded.
Make sure what the boards, I don't know if I'm ready to sit down and start trying to prioritize all this. We've got a chance to review it and think about it, bothering about my stance of priority, what I think would be most important, but that's just my thoughts. Is this something the board would like to address now? Take aside and look it over so we can talk, when we have a chance to look it over, talk about it again, where, and we can talk about it in our meeting later in the month? Or we could have another, another meeting to deal specifically with this.
I'd like to just point out that the commissioners will be meeting on Tuesday at their work session and we'll need to be there, a representative will need to be there, what is it, 2:00, 2:50 to identify our priorities.
Well, Dr. Baldwin, thank you very.
We got that notification yesterday.
I guess you just took the sun up the window myself and I guess we'll do it now, didn't we?
We don't have to.
We'll give everybody a second to look this, look this over.
Yeah, so your school system has to be there too. Like each department has its kinds of.
That used by June. Okay. So we can back to the, the, the discussions. I was going to test that one where I have to, it weren't big enough. Students and I was like, so we had things. If we're going to, that does bring, thank you, Angie, that brings up thoughts. So if we're going to talk about this now, I think Angie's indicated to me, we have $13,000 remaining from the previous appropriations, is that right? That we can take into account looking at. And our Cartoon J fund is where?
I've got a question about the yellow items in Franklin High School. In lieu of the fact that we talked about two possible long range plans, I think we've talked about the next five years or so, how does that change the priority making these yellows from last year maintain priority? Because on both plans, it wouldn't be useful.
I think that's what we're going to do, Coach, dear. We can reprioritize. This is just same from last year and obviously what we did last year may not carry forward to this year based on knowledge and whatever. So we can basically just reprioritize. And I think that's what we're going to be asked to do is reprioritize now what we think the items in the sending order, or we can submit this whole thing as is to commissioners, which I don't recommend. That's a, that's a lot of money.
The total request is 2.8 million dollars. If you include the QZAP, it comes to about 4.1 million dollars.
Okay, so does that 2.0 million take in the 750,000 for Union?
Yes.
So that would be double. That was the 4 million, you'd have the, you'd have the million renovation and the 750,000 and that total, right? No?
No, I separated those out. So the, well, what, it depends. If we, if we apply for the QZAP, then you would, I did not, I included the 7, the 740,000 in the, that's in the 4 million dollar request.
Okay. So that 4 million dollar request is not included in the QZAP money?
Well, actually, you're right. We would, that does affect that total.
So to clarify, Dr. Baldwin, what we're looking at is the first two pages are, everything on that is pretty much outside Union Academy, correct?
Correct.
If you see a couple of little things along the lines, it's like, together, it's like storage cabinets, isn't that right? A few things.
Yes.
That is there. But 2.8 would be pretty much for the schools outside Union Academy.
Correct.
If they were limited, Union Academy, did those things, we're talking about that, please. The 1.475 includes the 749 figure, is that right?
Correct.
All right. So the total would be, you came as 1.475,000 dollars.
And that is an 18 month low request.
Go back to it. But those figures, the 749, very much complication, would be included in the 1.4 billion dollars.
No. Well, what that, what that is, is based on Ms. Cotton's request, she requested basically 750,000 dollars. So if we don't apply for the QZAP, that's her request. If we apply for the QZAP, then that, if we apply for the QZAP, that is a total renovation, which goes beyond her request.
But the renovation would include the items in her request?
Yes.
It would take care of that.
Except for, if you go back to that second page, that would necessarily include storage cabinets, the desks and.
And the other furnishing. Mr. Bell?
Let me, let Tracy speak to the windows of Franklin House.
I believe I would hope that all for priority for next year because as you remember, we had money to replace the balance spring kits in those windows and that has been done. So right now, those windows are, I mean, they're not, they're not a danger like they were.
Right, that they were at one time. Just fairly inefficient, shall we say.
They're deteriorating on the outside, but they're okay. Like I said, the danger, the safety issue is not there.
That was a problem. That was a major, they're, they're inefficient in terms of energy cost, but last year they were unsafe as well.
Correct.
Can I ask a question? Quick clarification. Do schools still get a pot of money for like things at the beginning of the year? So Ronnie had mentioned that at the, or someone had mentioned that at the joint facility review committee, like much of the playgrounds, like is that pot of money still given to each principals to use in their discretion?
They were able to do that in the past.
Program assistance?
Yes.
That allocation was? And they, they hit away with that a number of years ago, didn't they?
Well, basically, that was part of the capital aid budget. And when we were receiving, when we were able to do that, we were receiving in excess of $700,000 a year in capital outlay. The last three years, I think, 0, 1 year, 99,000, 199 last year. So we've not been able to do that. We've been able to just maintain our buildings, basically. It does not include, and even when we were, even when we had program assistance, we didn't use that for purchasing the molds, did we? Most of the time that was paid by PTO and things like that. But we purchased desks and file cabinets and soup tables, that sort of thing. We've not been able to do that since 2009, 2008?
At least now in the middle. I would say our PTOs and our booster clubs and our individual companies and the communities and parents have stepped up and paid for a lot of that stuff.
Exactly. I don't know, we're very fortunate. We have a community that, we operate here and that cares and do those things for us.
I'll have one more question, sorry. On the Franklin High School request, I think I don't have it in front of me, but that I've seen, is it, is there a sign for an electronic billboard still?
There is, that's included in what we're looking at.
Yeah, is that the same thing that, that children, Coach Nifertuner came to the board for and asked? It's a different board?
Different board. This would be the one out in front, where we now have.
Oh, okay. I was thinking of the board, okay.
This would be one like similar to what we have at, I think Mountain View, intermediate and places where you can put messages on there.
Should we establish some kind of priority as a board as far as, this is a lot to just look at here.
Right.
Should they make decisions on, should we look at things, say like, okay, you know, in lieu of what, some of the things that happen around the nation, is safety and being able to lock doors, is that primary and?
More important than silent.
I think that's what we've got to do before we have a short timeframe, Coach, since this is your first session through this. I wish we had a little bit more time, but it is what it is, I think though. So I think what our job to do is, is to reprioritize. We've already highlighted something in last year, we're not going to, it's a priority now. So what we need to do is prioritize and decide how are these list of 2.1, that's the one. What we feel are our priorities and whether we can submit to, we can do it all and both, we can do everything, or we, I'm going to use this word, get a little bit more realistic and try to present the things that we feel are high priority.
I think we should do it realistic because if we want the money from them, they want us to be serious. And I, I mean, sure, if they give us all this money, it's not going to happen.
Correct.
And so I think if we're serious, we're never going to be more serious about our requests. I mean, there's, yes, I don't know, there's lots of things on the black on here, but, but like some of these things, like the rubber safety molds for playgrounds. You know, first of all, I mean, if it, I guess we're going to have some question answered, is this a safety issue for our kids?
Yes.
I mean, or is there another way to get that? Like I know for us in Highlands, we have been coming up with that within our community. I, I'm not saying that it needs to be done that way. I'm just saying, is there other options for that money? Is it a safety issues for kids out there? What is CDS? What school is that?
Cartoon J.
Cartoon J. I mean, if that's an ongoing issue, then we need to take care of that. I think we've been talking about, there's something else on here for some, something for, curtain for safety and inhaler for quite some time.
This renovation on that boys locker room, I know that from day one that I've been on this board, that's been asked.
But, so, but at the same time, I wonder how big a priority it is.
That's it. We've got to prioritize right now with what we're looking at. Something brought up a good issue, should, that's, yes, we want that, but if we have other issues that are safety issues or other things, that's what our job is right now. We have to prioritize and try to get that narrowed down to what we feel are priorities and what we want to submit, so.
How'd you done that before? Do you, do you have any system of ranking or?
We just kind of go through it and what we've done and I don't know if we just kind of go by each item and we'll talk about it prior to quickly, or if we can highlight the ones that jump out at us right now. For example, I'm living at a driver's ed car. We have a voided issue for a long time, but the one we had, we just had to put a new transmission in. How many miles does it have on it? Mr. Bell?
About 165,000. About a hundred and sixty-five thousand.
And do we really want our children driving around in a car trying to learn how to drive with one who's got that amount of mileage on him?
And we also this week lost another car out of the fleet. And so we have... So we've lost a car in the fleet.
Right.
Doctor, none of the cars that we currently are using, to my knowledge, they're all over a hundred plus thousand miles in every car that we own.
The blue-crowned big has two hundred and ten thousand?
Two hundred and fifteen, I think they have, two hundred and fifteen thousand. And the one that we lost, which was an old Loosmobile, probably was... It was beyond that.
It was well over two hundred thousand.
You know, I think that, like the driver's ed, like you just said, it affects every student that comes through.
Right.
And this is something that we... It's been ongoing thing. I know personally, I... We either ask... I think we should ask for the money from them or even take it out of current funds that we have. We have been putting this off for a while, and that's something... First of all, you've got a driver under there that is not experienced unless we have mom that's been driving since she was ten and they told me to get her legal. But for most of her, you don't usually... I mean, we need...
Exactly.
It's a very safety issue. It affects all of our children.
Right.
We need to continue to help our kids get their driver's license.
I certainly agree with everything that's being said. I would just like to note that there's still a big question mark about driver's ed for next year.
Is there a possibility that we're not going to?
Yeah, I would say there's a possibility.
And I think that's probably a slim possibility, because there's so many people that are going to have... That affects so many people and so many voters. I just question, are they actually gonna take that away?
I, you know...
And I'm not trying to question you, I'm asking.
Well, and I agree with you. I just think that we need to note that at this point, we need a driver's ed car.
But what about this? If we want a driver's ed car, could you not put it, convert it into your car that you're telling me to use?
I think we just need... We need to note that, because we're aware that driver's ed may be contracted out next year. You know, that may be an option. It may be taken completely away from the school system, and it may be back in... As a requirement for us to provide, but with no funding, so.
Don't interrupt, Doctor. Isn't that the way it looks like it's headed?
I really... I can't predict how it's gonna end.
Based on what I'm seeing, I keep seeing where they're not gonna fund it, but we have to provide it.
I can't tell you that that's... That is the latest... That was the latest statement in the budget. The statement said was that driver's ed would no longer be funded out of the highway fund. LEAs were directed to fund it from funds available. Now, you know, in talking to members of the General Assembly recently, their indication was that it needs to be privatized, either through the school system or separate from the school system. In other words, the school system wouldn't be involved with driver's ed, it would be privately maintained, and the parents would go directly to the contractor. So there's some options out there, but yes, as you stated, right now, it is currently under ours.
I think I may be going at this the wrong way. Let me ask another question. We have thirteen thousand dollars right now, Mr. Bell or Tracy. Why haven't we designated that for? What were... Have we made plans for that money on this list? Anything on this list for that money?
What thirteen thousand?
We have thirteen thousand for what?
It's left over.
I can think Angie's name for a second. We still have thirteen thousand dollars left from last year's appropriation.
Let me speak to one thing in category one, and that is the carpet for Union School. And what we are... Y'all, does everyone know what has happened at Union School in regard to that free carpet project? We went to pull the carpet up, the carpet company came and tried to pull it up for somebody. But unneeded work, might I add. And we discovered that we had asbestos-contained tiles, the old nine-by-nine tiles were never removed at Union. And that was... We found that at Highlands, we found it at Anahala, we found it East Franklin, all those nineteen fifty-two vintage buildings, they just covered it up. But now, in taking up this glue, this carpet, it is so glued to the tile, it's yanking the tile up. And as you start to pull it up, it breaks tile. Now you have a... You're creating a situation where you may expose fibers into the air from the tile. In its current condition, it does not pose a problem. So we just covered it right back up, we stopped. And I have talked to the folks now in Raleigh, and I've explained what we found and what we did, and they said that we are... We're good, you know, we've not caused a problem. But so we can't proceed on until we do a baitment, which means we gotta have a company come in there and take it up and do it, you know, they gotta take off the windows and the doors and put in air purification precautions, and that's gonna cost additional money, cost three... The estimate is three dollars a square foot, and I've gotten the estimate of about a little over twenty-one thousand dollars, basically three thousand dollars to get rid of this stuff before we put anything down. And if in doing so, you would not... It would not be my recommendation to put carpet back at Union School. If you're gonna take all that up, then we're gonna go back with VCT tiles like Franklin High School, because carpet is something that you need to replace every ten years. We put VCT down, and it will last Union eight years.
And do we... You would still have none of that in case a QZAP comes through?
So in this budget proposal we're sending to the commissioners, we need to put down that baitment cost and the estimate as to what it costs to put down VCT.
And I put CBT on there.
Yeah, so in doing so, Doctor Tracy, we think that that total price is gonna cost you about thirty-five thousand dollars, about what we came up with to fix Union. But you've already purchased this carpet. Mr. Bob's got it. And since Macon Middle School has been requesting carpet to replace those commons areas in those classrooms, we've gone over and looked at, we can do most of the carpeting request that's in this budget now at Macon Middle School. I just need your approval today, and we'll call Mr. Bob up and send Mr. Bob and his carpet guys to Macon Middle School and put down the carpet, which you've already... He's already purchased and we're a bill partner.
And what is the fifteen thousand left over from that?
Thirteen thousand's left over. We had appropriation of a hundred ninety-nine thousand thirty-five dollars, and you all would not set priorities. We would set priorities for everything except thirteen thousand dollars.
So let me complete this. The carpet that we bought for Union would not complete this request that we have for Macon Middle School. So that's where the thirteen thousand dollars is going to be. It won't cost the all the thirteen thousand, but I'd like to have your approval then to go ahead and just complete this and mark Macon Middle School off.
How much would that take out of the thirteen thousand?
Give me that as much as it's gonna take.
I want to know, Doctor Christian Bob, go by and measure it up and tell how much more he needs.
Well, we have... We... He and I went and borrowed that one. We can do the three commons, and he's just saying eight, two, nine classrooms, so that would...
With what we have, Tracy?
With what we have.
So that wouldn't affect the thirteen thousand?
Well, Scott has gone back to him, Richard Mazlin has called him, and he has recalculated the square yards, and he thinks he all missed it by a little bit. So there's some controversy here from him in saying that...
He's got the right ruler. I trust him.
He said the common... The common area was bigger than what he thought.
Yeah, exactly.
I'd like to help check this.
He's also an ACC football official, so his measurements are really good.
In the interest of time, we have thirteen thousand dollars, all right, so... But the other thing is, if we decide to pursue QZAP for Union Academy, then this whole discussion about these for Union disappear anyway, correct? But the funds would take care of what we're talking about. And you're gonna meet on the twenty-sixth, it's just coming right up.
Right.
And so I'm... What I'm... I guess between days of twenty-six, I can tell you if we need to use that thirteen thousand. And then at that point in time on the twenty-sixth, then you can make a decision on how you wanna deal with that money. I guess at the same time, we gotta get a list of priorities to the commissioner for the twenty-sixth, and I'm trying to use the thirteen... All right, Tracy, out of thirteen thousand, if... How much did Scott say we missed it by? Terry? Any idea, Mazlin?
Tell your classroom off if you have to.
What's that?
Tell your classroom off if you have to.
Yeah, we can do that, you know, just move forward and then move on. I think we need to do the thirteen, we need to stretch it what we can here and prioritize what we decided.
Can I make a suggestion on that, using that part of that thirteen thousand for consideration of the AED units at Macon Early College, Carticajay, Union, Isle Valley?
What is AED?
That's those defibrillators that are in our other schools.
Is the first one of that one, right?
Correct.
For what?
Person has a heart attack with a defibrillator.
They sound around, they need something.
We have them in... These are the four schools we don't have them in. So we're gonna move on, we're just gonna spend our thirteen thousand dollars as if we weren't worried about it, in my opinion. So out of thirteen thousand dollars, we've identified roughly five thousand dollars out of the thirteen in Dr. Ball and Sanders' need there, and I totally agree, so.
Is there something that Tracy or Mr. Bell could tell us that in their... If you got on this list, it's very important that we address it immediately?
That leaves us eight thousand dollars.
I can spend the thirteen thousand, I'll have them on mine.
But which one do you like? Which one do you think that... My question is, you know better than me, what is it?
Right. But that is your thirteen, so if they're gonna pay... I don't have enough.
So should we cross out the carpet for the three common areas and not the classroom at Macon Middle School?
Yes.
Because we're gonna do that now.
Exactly.
Now, that... So has that been approved? I mean, we need more approval to move forward with that.
I... Y'all were black before I...
I would make a motion to take the carpet that we have already purchased and paid for for Mr. Bob and take it and use it into Macon Middle and use what we have and let it go as far as it can go and then use it.
I mostly use carpet that we purchased, Mr. Bob's transferred from Union Academy to Macon Middle School. I have a motion here in a second. A motion to take on the table center, I say, all right, opposed, so moved.
And we take the request, Union Academy, and do we make the decision now, do we want to submit the Union Academy request as they are to the county commission, or should we glance through and see if there's anything we should take off before we give it to them?
Well, as far as I'm saying, was right now, we're gonna look at if there's stuff like, in my opinion, what we're gonna consider for Union Academy right now is the things that would not be included in the possible QZAP. Because if we're... I think, I think, I know we're gonna head with that once we get to our figures, we will, but right now, the things we're looking at, Fred, and then we'll talk about any other things, so the two point eight, let's put a priority on those, and then if we have anything that's a priority for Union that we may wanna do, we may have that as a separate item that we can submit to them, if that makes sense.
I... So how important are security locks for two main hallways are at CEDS, is that?
Carticajay.
What is that?
Carticajay.
Carticajay, you told me that already.
Got any questions, Mr. Bell?
Can you tell me, the security locks for two main hallways, how big a safety issue is that?
What we've done at that school now, we have at the doors, we have a camera device where if you walked up to the school, you cannot get in the building, you've got to push a button, and then the sections can see you, or if you don't know, you should have what you... Reason for being there, and then make a decision whether you let you in the actual school or not. Once you start in the Carticajay in South Macon, you know, you could not go to the office, you could go right or go left and go down those hallways, because there's no... There is no means by which to... Well, there is, really, but Dr. Ball, they have those corridor doors that they can't lock.
They are locked, and let me tell you, it's a pain, because the secretaries are running their backsides off, running back and forth to let people through those doors, including me.
Right, their request was to have remote locks on their schools.
Yeah, that's what their request is.
That's what they're...
She can sit at the desk and buzz in.
Exactly.
So it's not a big safety issue yet, it's... I mean, I understand the business.
Well, basically, we would have two doors that visitors would be buzzed through, the main entrance door, they'd be buzzed in there, and then once they're in the lobby, they request to go down the hall, and the secretary buzzes and then down the hall.
But it is a better situation than it was before. Before, there was no control over it, the door was always unlocked, people would just walk into the building. Now, people have to go and push the button and get acknowledged in order to get into the school. So it's not as, in my opinion, as it was once was, so, you know, that's...
Yeah, you can't put that question, thank you, gentlemen. Tracy, was there something on there that you thought was...
We've got eight thousand dollars, guys, we paid for that. Tell us something that we need to put that to. If we follow the recommendation, which is, which I think is, AED units, I think those should be prioritized. So I think just eight thousand dollars to mark something off here with, and if y'all give me that.
So it looks like there's security cameras, nothing for multiple schools, huh?
I see eleven thousand dollars, I'm looking at that right, security cameras at Macon Middle at five thousand, security cameras at Isle Valley for six thousand, security cameras at Anahala for twelve, about twelve thousand. Security cameras at this facility.
So there are obviously those, how do you differentiate between ones that are gonna see eight thousand dollars now by far?
We're just adding eight thousand other cameras to those facilities?
We can. We're gonna run into an issue probably in Macon Middle where there's not enough room on the MVR, the recorder, to put more cameras. So I don't think the request for Macon Middle, the ten thousand dollar request would do theirs.
So you have cameras or just add two?
That would be adding two additional cameras, which means you would have to get a bigger MVR out there or something. MBI, I think they've got room on theirs, Isle Valley has room on theirs.
How much would... How much does upgrade the MVR at Macon Middle?
If I remember correctly, it's about thirteen thousand dollar item, somewhere around.
Well, I would think that's something that the commissioners would be very interested in possibly supporting because of the safety issue, just thought.
Right. I think it should be on our, what we submit to them.
And the reason the security cameras were here is we had to cut the gas lines.
We had to have several times this year.
Burned one car too.
Yes.
I'm gonna go back to our initial question, I think, here it goes. We need... We've got eight thousand dollars, we need to get designated for something, so we can make a decision.
What we put toward a driver's ed car that show we're serious about needing one, then maybe it'll come up to shift.
So cut it down, just say remaining ten out of that? Or is there some... I guess what I'm looking at you, Tracy, is there something right here, Stephanie, put it best, is there something here that is threatening the safety of our students that needs to be addressed right now?
Well, of course, it's more than your... What we have to allocate, the doors at the career center.
Yeah.
I could pick out eight thousand dollars worth.
Okay, well then, if you're saying that that is a safety issue, then we should be spending that eight thousand dollars and taking the rest out of Carticajay to make it happen if it's a safety issue.
Those doors cannot... They're stuck, and we get written up every time by GUT make up the inspection.
Give me there, the total cost of that was what?
Thirteen thousand.
So we need to appropriate the remaining eight thousand dollars and five thousand dollars from our Carticajay funds. I think I hear a motion coming from somebody, somewhere.
I would make a motion that we take eight thousand dollars remaining and take an additional five thousand from Carticajay and get these doors up to safety standards.
Which doors are they?
Explain to me. Inside the classrooms, which can... Either the exterior door that goes directly out to the sideboard, then come back to the interior of the building. So it's their exit out to the outside.
You either have to have a window or a door.
Right.
And they don't have windows.
I second them.
There's no secondary egress. But now, that thirteen thousand dollars that... I understand where you're trying to get a figure here, but Angie and I ran into this last time when we say just thirteen thousand dollars. What if it's thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty dollars?
Well, then, we're taking extra dollars.
I wanna suggest to Stephanie that she amend her motion, if you don't mind, Stephanie. We also have the AEDs, I would recommend that you put that in your motion, so we can go ahead and get that out of the way.
Okay.
And also, I think that's why, I was about to go there, that we actually allot ten thousand dollars total, five, the remaining eight, and then another...
Five.
Another five from our Carticajay funds, make sure we have enough to take care of that. Is that sound, Chris?
Yes, I would make a motion to use the remaining eight thousand dollars in the capital outlay, go on to Carticajay capital outlay money, and get a ten thousand dollars to buy the specified AEDs from the schools that have none of those available, and to fix the doors at the career center, expecting it to be somewhere around thirteen thousand dollars, but leave a little bit of a room where there's a thousand dollars to make sure that it does happen.
So spell it out, the motion is, so we got thirteen thousand, five thousand, six four dollars to come out of our current capital outlay, the remaining eight thousand... four dollars will come out of our current capital outlay, the remaining eight thousand dollars will come out of our capital outlay, and then seven thousand will be allotted on a returning basis, come out of our Carticula J funds to complete the project for the doors at the high school. Am I that right?
And put in the AEDs.
Yeah, it is, out of thirteen, AEDs, I think, if I'm reading this right, Stephanie, I'm gonna, we got thirteen thousand, so, the motion is, we're gonna take five thousand dollars, sixty-four out of the current capital outlay, which would, uh, that, out of thirteen, we're paying for five thousand, sixty-four. We're also lining our capital outlay eight thousand dollars to go toward the project of replacing the doors, with an additional seven thousand dollars on a returning basis come from the Carticula J fund to complete the door project at the high school.
That would be correct.
And I have a second, Miss, is that right? All in favor, say aye, aye, opposed, so moved. Thank y'all, I would mark, let's mark two of those then, on our overall, um, things, what, what else, so we've got the, that takes care of, we've got rid of the carpet, we've got rid of the doorers.
We've taken care of the thirteen thousand dollars of the area that's held in capital outlay.
Right, so, and now, we're going, remaining then with these, by the pinpoint, what we're gonna submit to our commissioners.
Could Mr. Green, look, could I ever just request that we quickly just go through these and say yes, no, because, I mean, some of them, to me, are just, I mean, yes, they'd be lovely to have, but I don't think that they don't take it serious when we're asking for some of these, um...
And to be honest with you, I don't expect to get, uh, an amount of, of, an excess of a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, especially considering if they consider a Q's app.
I agree, so that's what I was...
Well, and, and the Q's app, I think, would, of course, I, I'm all, you need it, and I do think, I, I doubt Highlands would put us up to part in our school, and would save a, um, a lot of money on a monthly basis, it would take a long time to pay back a million dollars in, in, um, utility costs, but it certainly is something that is, is needed, but I just think, actually, if we don't get two hundred thousand, could we just go line by line, just very quickly, say yes, no?
I was gonna, what I was gonna do is say, yes, that's a good idea, except, I wanna set aside a hundred and fourteen thousand, I'll keep that off to the side where we have that, if we're going through these things, put that to the side as far as school furniture and equipment needs. Mr. Brown, that's a very valid point, I won't expand on that a little bit, when we get to that stage.
Okay.
All right, I think, Stephanie, she's read my mind, I think that at this point, we've gotten rid of the ones, the things, the work's gonna go line by line, which I think we'll do, and just say, and I'll look at Mr. Bell and Dr. Baldwin also to do that, and say, if we're looking at trying to keep this within a hundred and ninety-nine, what pinpoint process we go through quickly, what are items we have to come back and let them come after that, so, most of playgrounds...
Maybe not even keep it to one ninety-nine, if we ask it for one ninety-nine, they're gonna give you one forty-nine, maybe ask for three or four hundred, I mean, that's just my, three, four hundred thousand, and hope that they may give us more.
We'll get there and narrow it down. Safety most for playground, Carticula J.
If it's a safety issue, yes, if it's not, I would say...
I don't think it is, I think in PTO, if they're not, we put it on one side over there, the, the PTO did, I'm not sure which side you were talking about. I mean, I'm out there a lot, so...
Southmacon, uh, PTO just purchased, so, what, what, what happens when you, and I love them to have it, but if, if we can, if we do it for one school...
It has to go everywhere.
Go everywhere.
Tracy, doesn't know?
Security locks for the hallways, Carticula J, I think we discussed that, is that...
So, you say yes or no?
That's not a high priority, I got to press, outdoor basketball court, again, I'd say no. I'm gonna go through, and when I say it, everybody just very quickly pop up. Mercy Latin ones and gyms on East Franklin School, that's only two hundred dollars.
That can be, that can be done out of maintenance, bud.
I don't know why that's even on there.
Yeah, it could be done out of maintenance, bud.
Across the, that...
Jim, let me, let me ask one, I know we're very...
Well, no...
But shouldn't we have labeled some of these in a couple of different categories, i- in case something happens with the commission, that there'll become a lot more money for school funding, we know, we've heard, that there's a possibility that they're gonna try to get no money for schools, right, you know, should, should we have high priority, priority, and no, or something like that?
That's kind of what we're gonna be doing right now, as we go through the list, that's where I'm gonna come back to, Fred.
I'm gonna come back and...
Do that, and once we spend the total list, then we can go back, everybody says, Jeff, and then say, well, did we leave something off that we need to also emphasize, okay? Uh, traffic bumps...
I would say no, yeah. You're not sure if that's a safety issue.
Franklin High School, close the roads down, so...
Close down.
This will be from McCollum Drive.
Yeah, right.
Which is open during school day.
During school day, it's on the backside, then, I don't know.
It's a public street.
Can we actually put, on a public street, put bumps?
Well, we have them on Panther, we have them on Panther Drive, which is a public street, it's only open, it's, it's open...
They're gonna, they're gonna put those, uh, speed bumps, uh, at the top of the hill, so that those folks that, that live and turn to the left as you first enter McCollum Drive, they would not have to go over these bumps, the bumps are to slow the traffic across the hill going down.
As far as the pressing ongoing need right now, I would say that's not right, correct. A little asterisk on one side of that one. Electric marquee at Franklin High School. Here's one, I do want to talk, walkways, reserves at Franklin High School, I suspect this is a safety issue, is that not right? Or no? What, what, what's, what's the extent of the damage?
It, it looks like a patchwork quilt over there, you got, some of the walkways are out of asphalt, some of the walkways are out of, uh...
Concrete.
Concrete, and...
Some asphalt does need to be repaired, it depends on how strongly we're gonna consider or prioritize the community.
But as far as a safety issue, it's not something that we need to look at, that has to be repaired right now, because it's safety or...
I think in terms of safety, we could repair, uh, we could patch it.
Patch it by now, slight terrible combats, uh, wheelchairs going across, but I think we've got enough room there.
Okay, so we can move forward.
It's, it's gator backing there, um, where you come out of the English building, go up in cafeteria, and probably repair some of that asphalt out there, just for a safety measure.
This was in the, uh, re, the renovation that we did over there a few years ago, and we came it over budget, and I couldn't...
Okay. I think right now, I'm gonna put a couple down, I'm gonna say, but right now, I don't think it's high then, as far as the first priority. Drainage, uh, I understand that, but is that, that's not, especially now, we're talking about that's not, as far as this year's...
A little more than two hundred thousand.
A little more than two hundred thousand. Stage lighting at, is this Highland School?
It is.
Okay.
I actually don't, that's the only thing he has on there for a request, and I'm not sure how big a need it is to be, I totally don't see it. I'm happy to find out from him, I mean, he must be, Mr. Chutter, I have to beg and ask you guys, I mean, he won't ask for much.
So, we don't know right now, that...
I'll, I'll ask him, I don't, but I don't think it's a, I know it's not a safety issue, I mean, if we, if it's bad enough, we just won't go on stage, right?
There you go. Carpet for tractor...
I think we're talking about thirty years old.
Okay. Carpet for tractor, that's Isle of Valley.
And that's probably something, how, how are you coming to track that in there? Is it in there?
We're at a hall, back foot, we have no place down at Isle to keep that tractor out of the elements, and we have to have it down at our most drain field. To me, it is priority. It's not a big, it's not a big ticket, but it's in there.
It's just four, ten hundred dollars.
Was it four, Mr. Bell?
Was it so we can protect, uh, one of our tractors, and we have to leave the Isle of and mow that sort of right there?
Which we have to do, but I'm...
Well, that's gonna say, that's somewhat of a smart thing to protect our already two fifteen thousand dollar investments.
You're gonna spend a lot of, of fuel, uh, driving back and forth.
Driving back and forth, though. I'm gonna circle that one as a priority. Soft pits and structure repair, is this...
Very apparent, I just got emailed this thing.
This is, so we can try to...
County, county is.
Okay. Renovation of boys locker room, Making Middle School, we've talked about it, but again, far as a priority, I don't have to question that, and a lot of the other needs we have, am I correct in saying that?
I would go along with you.
I would, I would, I would just add that that, that, there is a, an element, a safety element, showers, floors, Tracy, what do you, what's your opinion of that?
Yeah, those showers, the, the ceiling and the walls and floors need to be, be upgraded, but whatever's they want to do, I know I was involved in taking the other lockers and everything out, with the previous premises there, and when mine was there, you know, we wanted to put it back, when, you know, we can't keep...
Well, what happened, that was had been turned into a weight room.
Correct.
And, and...
Well, and they moved the weight room out.
I think it was at our...
The weights are out in the weight, out of the locker room.
And, and these, uh, uh, and this, we're looking at, uh, creature of the floor, uh, in there, uh, the floor has got some tile on it, and it's fire concrete, and so he wants that, uh...
I'm not saying the showers are pretty much an awful lot, I mean...
Uh, yeah, and, and he wants, uh, he wants, some, some work done in the showers, but it would be limited, basically, it's just floor, new paint.
That's just concrete in there, so I'm sure that won't be taken.
New sinks and new promotes.
So, is thirty thousand dollars a real estate figure, or can be done less than?
I'd say thirty, yeah.
Yeah, I'd say thirty.
Yeah, and, and see, and, and the reason it's thirty thousand, it says boys locker room, but I, now I'm over and look at, uh, we're gonna have to do a little bit over the girls locker room, too. You don't wanna do, you don't wanna...
No, that's what I'm saying, tell us what we need, so thirty thousand, what do you do, what we're talking about?
I would, I would say...
I would leave that right now, we can always come back to...
Now, that's, that's a mention, I believe that included both locker rooms last year, because we had that conversation.
Yeah, I explained to him, you know, you can't, you can't, uh...
Cannot ignore the girls locker room. I know, we don't wanna do that option. Driveway behind the school, that's Making Middle School, no, that's already, that's green, we're taking care of that, sorry, and that's my error. Carpet we addressed, speaker system for Making Middle School for the gym.
It's not a priority.
I wouldn't think so either, it's just something that you can't hear very well, or what? Yeah, dude, all right, moving on, playground equipment, MBI.
He hasn't done.
Here's, uh, here. That's got fifty thousand dollar figure on it.
I'd probably get you one piece that twenty kids could play on. I just wanna, uh, say something, when did the board have to start line requests, and didn't the board used to get like a lump sum money, and then you could decide where, how you wanted to spend that money?
We're still hoping we're gonna get that.
I mean, it used to though, right? Like, two thousand eight, two thousand seven?
It changed, Angie, you got me wrong, about four years ago, where we were told, going forward, we needed to submit items, and those items would be submitted under these categories, and what we submitted would be, that's, if they approved it, that's what the money was designated for.
And I, and I just want to, a quick thing, I just like the principals, I don't think they're throwing fluff out there, it's kinda like the, the, the playground, I spent Christmas in Hickory, I went to every ele, I mean, I went to like four or five different elementary schools for my kids to play, and every one of them, the playground would blow away any facility in, in Franklin, which is just, you know, if fifth and sixth grade deserved one, then it would be nice.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, address Mr. Sutton, I agree with you, I can, that both these principals are giving us fluff.
Yeah.
But regardless, County Commissioners are not giving us anything to work with for you guys, so, we have to come up with, unfortunately, what's safest for our kids and, and deal with it, I mean, I would love, I don't, what if you guys are asking, well, there's a few things on here, I might think, might be a little bit of fluff, but for the most part, ninety-eight percent of it's not, I bet, we don't have a system if we can't get it.
Oh, I know, yeah, I totally understand.
You don't have any playground?
Zero.
I'm not necessarily saying that it's out, we're just gonna, we're prioritizing it, is that what we're doing, or we're, we're not taking all this off?
Not right now, we're just trying to see, to get a figure out, the top priority stuff.
Right now, I have a man volunteering to, to build playground equipment and use PTO funds, uh, we've got about twenty, uh, log stunts out there that the kids love to build and play with and jump off of.
And I know last year, Iowa come up with some money within their community, uh, you know, and then County Commissioners matched it. I know they have a tendency to, even outside of what we give to you, they have a tendency to match when a community goes out there, I'm just giving you ideas, I would love...
We got fifteen or twenty thousand, PTO does, that they would love to drop on, yeah, but it only covers, I mean, you're talking, it's, it's expensive.
I agree, it is.
Well, if he had, if, if PTO already has fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, maybe we should prioritize this request, and then when we go to the commissioners, make them where the PTO has a matching amount to apply toward that.
I think that would be, uh, actually for getting you some.
They have fifteen, and I'd give five as general easy, just to get something for kids to play with out there.
We do, so let's get, I'll, I'll give a few marks, and we'll come up with amounts that you can match, and say the commissioners will help us out with that then, before we go to them.
Outside the capital outlay.
Well, I think, probably to make it, as a capital outlay request, let them know that, if we, if they fund it, it costs forty thousand.
We have that money, so, we're talking about, you know, if, if, if we got fifty thousand dollars on the, on this right now...
Fifty thousand dollars is the request right now, Mark, so you're saying that you have, did you say you have twenty thousand that you can match, or you have?
I'm pretty sure PTO has fifteen, and I could cover the rest in general, to get up to twenty.
Okay, so, how about we say this, we have, we have available twenty thousand dollars, but we need fifty, could they, could they contribute thirty thousand to that? That be reasonable request?
Counsel's red flag, but how are we gonna treat the other, while we're doing this, all our other schools, or that are in the same flock?
Actually, I think, this is the only school that has no playground equipment.
Everybody's Franklin, what do they have?
They have a...
They have playground equipment.
They do?
And Iowa, we did the same thing for them last year. Or wherever, maybe in New York, I can't remember now.
The only other, one of the issue on playground equipment, you're gonna see, is Mr. Bowles is not here to cry, but, uh, Chris Bowles has a lot of playground equipment down at Southmacon, but now, because of A's equipment, it is requiring some of the power work.
And it's, uh, it's on here.
Yeah, it's on here.
We, we can talk about that when we get to it, but it's under, it's under actual equipment.
So, let me make sure I understand, so, Mr. Bell, we have playground equipment at the other schools?
Yes.
There's not a need out there that we're ignoring if we talk, build this route with MBI?
MBI is only elementary, K six.
That does not have...
Does not have anything.
What you're saying is, we think we can get twenty thou, Mark, Mr. Sutton, sorry, I get informal, we have twenty thousand dollars to work with now?
Yeah.
And so, are we reckon, are we recommending we leave a thirty thousand dollar request in for that?
Yeah, we can, we just note with commissioners that, that we have community funds available to apply toward that, an amount of twenty thousand dollars, we're setting in to, to thirty thousand towards this request.
And that's a collection of about three or four years now?
I understand.
That we've built up to get to that amount?
Oh, yeah, I'm very proud of there, they've done very, very well, so, I'm gonna leave, we're gonna, all right, so we got thirty thousand for playground equipment. Expansion of concession stand at, uh, Manahela School? No. Repair kitchen, dressing room, lobby, Manahela School.
Tracy, I, I'm not sure exactly what that request is.
The kitchen is the walls, the stuff coming off the walls, we get written up every time.
So, so are they talking, Kim, at the, uh, the kitchen in the, uh, in the gym?
I don't, I don't know what's in the gym.
It's the same, that's the same stuff. That, that stucco is, uh, in there. And now that I see that, that's where that stucco is. It's in the kitchen, it's in the, the dressing rooms on one wall and on the gym lobby. That's one wall there next to the gym. What they did was when they renovated, when they added that, session stand, weight room, those locker rooms, that was, uh, brick was on the, uh, outside of the gym, inside of those walls. So they just stuccoed that and it's coming off.
So in, in the, in the dressing room and gym lobby, if I'm understanding right, we could go in and re-power the stucco and put new paint on it?
Well, I think what you need to do is remove that stucco.
You have to remove it because it's, whatever material it is, it will not stay.
Yeah, but, yeah, in the kitchen, I understand because it flakes off in the food preparation area, but in these areas.
It's a continuous thing.
Yeah, you might take it off. We, we actually did remove it in the weight room and put new stucco on it, but those other two areas, uh, it just keeps flaking off. Just have to take it all the way out and put.
I know in the cafeteria kitchen part, and, and Kim, uh, we have looked at this several times and, and those blocks is just moist and won't hold nothing. Nothing will adhere to it. So that's why we keep running into this problem. So we looked in her, which covered a portion of the, you know, stained sheets, uh, to try to keep that coming in.
Sounds like a pretty important priority.
Yeah, can we just remove that stucco and paint it?
Yeah, I don't understand why they didn't just paint the block. Why, why did we put stucco on it?
Could that be the case in all the areas? Were you just remove that stucco and paint the block or is one of them is?
I'll look in the, in the gym areas and we'll look at that, but I know with, with her areas and the food preparation areas, that porous block, I don't know if they'll allow us to have that.
Trace that the moisture issue comes out.
Correct.
But that needs to be repaired.
If you're looking at it, but look at, from priority standpoint, the kitchen is the priority.
Yeah.
The other two become secondary to the kitchen, right?
I'd say we still leave it on there.
And then what happens is if we have twenty-six up, we need to re-allocate that, which always do so.
Yeah, because right now we're not making the diehard decision. We're just having, this is just to go to the commissioner at this point.
Twenty-six, so we're leaving that. Uh, parking lot, Nantahala School.
I have something, something to say about that. I mean, I don't know about the complete repaving, but that bow down to the school is falling apart. We've got some huge potholes and it might need repairing.
That also was something that David and I had looked at several years ago and the Department of Transportation used to do that.
They still build.
Even where that school bus travels, the DOT has to repair those areas.
Falling apart.
And so I, I need to give the DOT.
Through the drainage problem, they cornered that office, um, too though. Did that get stretched out?
I guess the, the state actually dug that out and repaired that, uh, had to fix.
I talked to Mr. Brown too, just real quick, and this might be something that you could do. Um, when we have a ballgame, people just park hilt or skelter down through there and, and you get about half the cars. So you have people parking all the way up to the substation, down the sides of the roads. And I, I'd asked Mr. Brown about it the other day, um, painting some lines down there where they, um, behind the school, so people would park in a more orderly fashion and you could get more cars in there. It is ridiculous at ballgames. I mean, there is, you, you're parking up at people's parked houses and stuff because there's nowhere to park. But if we could get some lines on that to kind of get people, you know, parking in there right, that would be great. But that might be something you could do instead of paying.
Yeah, we can do that if, but we need to check on the surface first.
Yeah. I'll be down there with a whistle.
Fourteen thousand dollars was what we're describing then, that do we need?
We can check with DOT about it.
Are you gonna check with DOTs? But is there some of that that's not covered that we need to consider? The DOT area.
I think if you're gonna, if you're gonna pave down, uh, the parts that the buses travel, uh, you're gonna need to repave that parking lot area too. So, and I, I would say that.
Somebody can get paid. I might could get a good deal.
Yeah, there you go. But I bet you fourteen thousand dollars just barely covers that.
The DOT, what they'll do to the access road coming in off of Wabang's turnbuckle, get down to the school itself, they'll go in, they'll patch those potholes. It'll be a tar and, tar and chat patch. I, I can already tell you what it's gonna be. And then if they must even redecode it, it's gonna be a, a, a tar and chat, uh, patch, just like they do the main, uh, volume road coming over to Nantahala. So that, that's what they're gonna do. I mean, I can tell you it's not gonna be asphalt.
That's how they, they can repair it.
But then parking lots there, like Dr. Baldwin says, that's a whole different, different, uh.
I would say still is that fourteen thousand dollars in there because that fourteen thousand dollars might go very far.
Parking lot you're talking about, this is, uh, carrying parking lot to the other side.
I think you're gonna, if you, if they, if they tar and chat that down through there, you're about gonna have to pay that parking lot repair with grain. What are we going in the building and?
Leave that money there. Leave it there, fourteen thousand. Storage building.
That is something that, that, uh, we've, we've looked at, uh, in, uh, he has a double wide classroom once that the father's down. Uh, it, it is clearly the center grain and just want to speak, uh, either with all the bus students in, you don't, Baldwin.
No, and, and the other issue too is that, um, that transport, what do you call those containers that, uh?
That merch container that's in front of it.
Get that thing out of there.
I want it back here behind the shop.
Well, that's a nice.
So we, we look, when we're gonna look in, in place of what that is, that's, that's every, uh, we'll get rid of the double wide, it'll probably be hauled off in, in, in a dump truck in pieces. And then we just pour a slab and then have all these metal cardboard companies come in, just fabricate just a metal shell building.
Which we need for the storage over there.
So they have the storage.
Yeah, you'd have to take all that stuff that they had in that container and put it somewhere. They have absolutely no storage over there.
Though what, that, what we've got's starting to get dangerous, correct?
Yes.
It, it, it needs to go. So I think seven thousand for that. Uh, lockdown fan buttons, probe lights. Is that, I don't think that would be necessarily a priority, would it?
No, I mean, they've got, they've got the, uh, buzzing.
Buzzing everything we got there now. Treatment plant, we've talked about that, but I also think we know that we have to break down that. Commissioner put stuff up and then trace that is operating and there's no issues with it at the current time. Sink and art room.
Yes.
Spoke your mouth. Wait a minute, I spoke, excuse me. Boy, that's a setup. Southmacon. Has a maintenance issue.
I'd like to add now to this list, uh, at Union Academy, uh, abatement and, uh, new floor, thirty-five thousand dollars.
If we're gonna go for QZAB, would that not take care of that?
If they're gonna prove the QZAB, then it needs to be, it's a priority and it needs to be in it.
Well, it, now that's.
So sink that is a.
That's on the back.
On the back.
Yeah.
So the sink is a maintenance, so we can move on now, correct?
Yes.
AD, we tried to capture your student tables at East Franklin.
What type of table we've got so far, you know, that renovation structure?
Yeah, that or, I was gonna wait till we got all the way through it, come back, get a current total and then we can pick, we can come back a little. How much is that, Angie?
About fifty-two, four.
Fifty-two, four total right now?
What did y'all do with the twenty-six thousand when I stepped out with the repairs and the, at the kitchen and, so you did leave that, hang on, I need to have that in.
Seventy-eight. Seventy-eight, four. Furniture machines, AD's got, captured your student ta- uh, captured tables at East Franklin. That's just a one. There's, we have tables, we have tables here now, correct? Student tables for classroom, assume same thing, auto floor, scrubber. Is there a need for that?
How bad a check is that one?
How much is that a check, Mr. Bell?
I have no idea.
Does also have then another, a global auto floor scrubber. What's, what's, is there a reason about two? What's the deal?
Well, one's, one, that's, they're not both scrubbers. What'd you say one of them was, Bill, uh?
Well, what, 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 what is that? More like a mop machine. Put you a mop behind. Uh, we have a contract with, uh.
With their, with their supplier, correct?
And he's, and he's supposed to be monitoring our equipment needs as well as our material needs, right?
New equipment's not in the contract, but if they stay in the budget at the end of the year, he's always able to try to, try to help somebody out.
Right, that we use that up.
And don't let the borrowers in the case of.
Yeah, they do. If they have to pick up one, they'll bring.
Moving on, um, up table East Franklin again. Bleachers, Franklin High School, not a priority. It'd be great to have them, but again, is that a priority, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen? Uh, bleachers, softball, baseball, soccer fields.
I would say that those aren't getting to be priorities because we're getting, running into safety issues over there. We're, we're gonna lose seventy-five to forty thousand dollars when we get sued, someone thought of those things.
Is there, I haven't been out there, sorry, I haven't been to six days then.
Isn't that off, I mean, isn't it, uh, the bleachers for Franklin High School's a little bit of a safety thing too? I've, I've had plenty of old people come to ask me, that's one of the big things they've been asking about, you know, can they get up there safely? Because they go.
Which one is this?
We've got two. Bleachers are for the gymnasium first, that's.
Yeah, that, yeah.
This would be for both the softball, the baseball and the soccer field there at Making Middle School.
They need that.
That's what they need. It says FHS, which are basically for the, you make a middle school, those fields out there.
The old red bleachers are the ones at the either end of the home stadium. Yeah. Those old bleachers they have. They're the ones that got the, all the braces are falling off.
Right, okay.
They're falling now.
What's that?
They've been replaced, haven't they?
No, those have, not, not the ones on the ends.
So this is making metal for the ba- soft, for the baseball softball field, right?
Well, there's two. Seventy-five thousand is for the middle school, but the old red was, yeah, those are.
I know we're just concentrating on that making middle school, so those we need to kind of leave in our discussion right now, Dr. Baldwin.
I, yeah, I think so.
Do you think they're a safety issue? Then the next one, the replacement Franklin High School, the old red bleacher down there, are those same, same scenario?
They're, I'd say that they are a priority, but not as high priority as the ones at the softball, baseball, soccer field. They're, they're getting almost to the same point, but they're not quite as a, as a hazard department.
So we're, our rest of these here, those we can look at, if we get those possible next year then, is that right? Gym floor cover, Franklin High School, is that just a cover for other events to cover the floor, is that right?
And that, the one they have on there is.
Awesome.
They, when they need one, they come to my school and get mine, that PTO bought.
That's another thing that.
I think that.
We just wrote it forward, some replaces, it's gonna cost us a lot more than it is to put it down. So leaving that. Session stand door, island school.
This is something that I'm talking, Mr. Brown, about, uh, that's in a request to me to, to buy. Of course, I couldn't at the time, but it was, it's the, the door for the concession stand, it's a garage type door, you know, rolled up. And it's totally out of commission. And I tried to get the guy locally here to go work on it. He wouldn't because it was not his, uh, franchise of original door.
They need to be able to operate the concession stand.
You're gonna go up or you, you don't come down.
Priority. Speed bumps, that's, uh, Isle of Valley. Maybe the same thing we had at the high school. Security cameras, I think we'll leave these, some of the pastures is there, so we can total up how much all those requests would be. School sign, making early college, is that just, that, we have a sign there, is this an upgrade? You don't have one at all? We have something, Terry, we talked about, we're gonna be able to put something up there. Did we not, weren't we gonna do that? Okay. Ten thousand dollars, what that covers?
That's a small, that, that covers small, electronic sign. There's been, there's, there's actually, there's no signage out there on the road at all for Southwestern. I mean, they, they, they've got, they've got some wooden signs up for Southwestern. And, uh, what time you, it's, it's talk about trying to do the one big sign with everybody on it, but it's not gonna happen.
Okay. Well, I'm not gonna struggle that one. I'll leave it, I'm, I won't cross it off, but I'm not gonna struggle it. Question mark. Security cameras, making middle school, again, we're gonna come back to them and total those. Student chairs, making middle school. Are those?
What, why, why are we going around the cameras?
I'm gonna total those all up and see what the total will be.
My bad, I just sweatshirt.
Student chairs, those are in excess of the other individual school furniture needs that we had, Dr. Baldwin.
Well, it, it depends on what we said, what we're actually deciding to go. If we ask for the hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for each school, then I think that that would probably.
Cover that. Zero turn mower, making middle school.
No, I think if you know, if you, just look out there and see the, the amount that they have to mow, right, they, they go through some equipment. They do need a new mower, Dr. Mr. Bell.
But do, like, do you not use the one from Franklin High School or there's some?
No.
The ones that we bought, they went where?
Went up to East Franklin and one stayed here. We moved the one up here to Union. So one stayed here on this campus and one went to East Franklin.
And we sent one this year, but, but was, was new like a deal. Those were a little bit cheaper than thirteen thousand dollars. Were they, they're not?
Fifty-one a piece.
At fifty-one, would they, they were, what, what size was that?
Forty-eight inch pivot.
And these were not, they're trackers, they're not the zero kind of.
I guess what I'm looking at is if we do replace that, can we use what you have got to cut that cost down a little bit over there or is a zero turn better for?
They've got a big, uh, uh, property over there as we know, but, uh, thirteen thousand seems, I don't know what kind of zero turn. Uh, that, that's about the right price. Uh, look at Mark right now. Mark, you have one, don't you?
Yeah, they, uh, we had one until it got stolen.
Yeah.
Uh, from the, when we initially built our building, a sixty-one inch, and it was, uh, about eleven or twelve then, five years ago.
We bought it under. Under the, uh, cost of destruction, we had to, we left it in, then the county actually bought it and that's, it was close to that price and it's, it will simplify or make the job a lot quicker.
There's a huge amount of hole there.
I guess I'm, I think we need regular space, in fact, we gotta have some over there.
I'd say leave it as a priority.
Right, so.
If you look at the town and county, what they've got, they got plenty of them.
And the good cars.
Uh, electric buffer with vacuum system, making middle school. Assuming that's a wish list. Cafeteria tables, making middle school, again, would that be included in the one fourteen?
Yes, I would say so.
Cafeteria parking, that's gonna be a maintenance item. Uh, cafeteria tables, MBI. Student tables, is that different from the one fourteen?
They would need to come out of the one fourteen.
Okay. Bus entrance curb at MBI, two thousand. Is that a safety issue? Or something that's going on there?
Well, it washes the road away because they never build a curb on that road.
We, we will, we curb is covering on that project, again, because of, of a cost overrun. So we had to take it from someplace and so that's where it got deducted.
So the, is the cost of, cause it got deducted, is the ongoing cost gonna exceed these two figures and by the time we continue to patch and repair what the erosion is causing? I hear, I hear silence.
The, the only other thing I can think of is that you would build up the ground around the road so where, when it slopes off the road, that it meets the grass and then continues to run all down.
That we could, or, or we could, uh, you could do it with, uh, with gravel, you know, you, you just push it up. You can try it.
That's fun to move on.
I, I, I know.
It's kinda like the rock.
We, we, we tried to take some measures over there because we knew it was gonna happen. We tried to put some, some, uh,
Rip wrap.
Rip wrap and stuff in there to try to, uh, slow that down, so.
Is that, that's not something that's likely to touch?
No.
What about the turnouts?
The turnouts, I, I, I can, I can, I can go to, uh, the DOT on the next item, um, where was that? The, the bus, bus entrance, the turnouts, I'll ask them then, where that rip wraps at, to remove that and to pave that this summer.
Cause those boulders end up out in the main road.
Yeah. I'll, I'll try to take care of that.
So would have possibly getting, is the two thousand dollars, like, is my question accurate saying, is this something that's ongoing, is it a cost for repair?
I, I don't make two thousand, I'll be honest. I, I don't worry if your number come from, but I'll make two thousand even if it touches the curb.
I don't know that it touched the curb. It'd probably do the turnouts, but the curb, I don't know.
I, I don't think we got the money down there to take turnouts, to paint the curbs up.
Gravel, emergency road, maintenance. Same thing, squares, dinner tables. New curtains for stays, Nantahala School. Missing? Any idea? We had, we had a hot fire last year on that, blocks.
They look bad, but, I mean, as far as it being like a safety issue or anything like that.
Okay.
We omitted those, uh, when we did the renovation, again, had a cost overrun, we got omitted. And memory search, we write, we're missing some of the back pieces that, that never even get put back up.
Yeah, I think this goes beyond just those front curtains.
Yeah, it goes beyond that, it goes back, it goes back.
But then, yeah, they put those, uh, they put those pleats back there too. It don't have any change there.
But it, it does look bad.
But not a priority as far as safety. Uh, install outside speakers in the corners. I would think that would be high.
The, 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 the speakers, uh, what James was talking about, in, that is so that whenever, uh, they make an announcement and the kids are out there on the ball field, so they can hear the announcement that they're out there, you know, hey.
Okay. Furniture equipment needs, again, if we go back, one fourteen, playground equipment.
That's what Mr. Bell, um, was referring to. Both of those, um, combined, it's about twelve thousand, two hundred dollar request. And what he's got out there, the, the playground equipment that we installed at Southmacon originally, now, uh, it needed repair, the plastic swings, each wrench is cracking and, and pinching kids. And there's a number of other repairs that need to be made, as well as the mulch, which he's already put out there.
But that ten thousand is a safety issue.
It is. Circle that mulch. He has, he has, uh, got that out there. Did they ever get it installed?
Will, will they put it in next?
Yeah, the mulch is there. It's terrible to be a person.
Yeah, that's my thought, yeah. Payone Classroom Furniture. Storage cabinets, Union Academy. It's a part of our wishlist, but high school, size desk, Union Academy, those would be put under, we, best one for fulfillment. Interactive classroom, what is that, Dr. Baldwin?
Um, I'm not exactly sure what that request is.
I, I don't know what it is either. I, you know, I have a similar question for.
But again, we're in public union where we do that, it'd be something we can look at. Furniture, John, generator, I think, trace, we talked about this, that is not.
At this point, I don't think that's a, an emergency, right?
Security cameras, make, is this an addition where we're, what were these?
Maybe here's where the generators, we've lost, we've lost four thousand dollars worth of stuff.
And a car. And two more mowers for making high schools, those would be for what?
Just eight mowers, that's the same situation we had last year, you know, we said we buy two and talk about buying two more this next year, it's just to.
I think we got.
Replace.
If we can get my bills those issue, we can put that up next year, if you're tracing.
Yes. Did you, have you got what we struggled there?
I would, I would like to, I would like, before we, before we add a month, I would like to just go back to that playground mulch real quick. And then is that, um, you know, this is something that community with the county commissioners for, to, has a request, so, um, maybe we need to actually request that the commissioners help us out with, with purchasing mulch, I mean.
At, at Carter and Joe?
Well, at all schools, at all schools, replacing the mulch at all schools, uh, especially considering, um, the requirements of the mulch, uh.
I would think some kind of volume buyer would be. I would think some kind of volume buyer would be...
So, we're gonna figure that, you're gonna, it says another request, Dr. Baldwin, any idea how much it'd take?
Well, right, right now, we've got two, two schools, two elementary schools that have requested it this year, and that's, and they both asked for around two thousand, two hundred dollars, so, if we requested an amount each year that we could apply towards mulch, and they've done a revolving request.
Would you... About the rubberized mulch, 'cause I would believe...
That's what Cartoon J had.
That's, and that's what you were asking for, right? Does that last longer all day?
He doesn't have, he doesn't have a playground football school.
Well, I mean, if he had one, I would...
I figured that would be part of the...
Well, and that's...
Southmacon initially had pea gravel, which is absolutely the best, but...
And at, at one time, that was the only thing you could put on playgrounds.
It's hard to replace it with that, and then the mulch has gotta be a certain kind, and double ground, and, uh, a certain size.
Then you buy metal in it, and have to come back, runs through their metal sector, they did that at Cartoon J.
We just did that at our church, and the rubberized mulch, they got there, however they do it, I mean, it's supposed to stay there a long time, and, you know, it...
Worth a little extra cost if it was, if you didn't...
Yeah, I mean, it's safety part of it, and not having to redo it, you know?
And this sort of goes back to that, a similar request for MVI, you know, PTOs have been paid for at least half the cost of mulch in Pasol. If we, we go to the commissioners and say, look, the PTOs are coming up with half the cost of mulch, can, can the school system through the county provide the other half of that cost?
So, we're talking about doing it on an individual basis?
Maybe, if we had two thousand dollars per year to apply towards playground mulch, we could do Cartoon J this year, or Southmacon this year, Cartoon J next year, and then all of that, follow it, see what I'm saying? If they would give us two thousand dollars a year towards mulch, we could do a, a, another, an elementary school for a year.
Rubberized, can we avoid that every year? Ask them how to rubberize and do it.
Rubberized, that's a cop, that's what you said.
Only thing is, it gets distributed outside of the area.
But you could also then buy a smaller amount and take it to, in this air places replaced, correct? How much the, the rubberized, how much would it be?
I don't know, we have a price on that, do you know, Mr. Bell?
That's a playground.
Well, I mean, if you're buying it by a bag, it loads, it's double what...
The, the, the life, the volume of purchases of rubber mulch was probably at Cartoon J, uh, and I could find out from them, but they bought it by the truck, wasn't it, there?
How many trucks did it take, any idea?
I have no idea, that's...
I guess what I'm trying to do is go with a figure that if we could just put it, if we've got room to put in, a one-time figure to get it all done.
And, and if we request, um, considering that the PTOs wanna help put the bill...
Bill's part of it, right?
Take four thousand dollars a year?
Well, that would take care of our school, two schools issue, it would be two more this year, it would be more.
But, uh, just let them know that the PTOs wanna come up with other half.
Just, just remember, if, if, if they buy playground equipment from Marx, and Marx would also become the name, as a name for mulch immediately.
Well, maybe, uh, probably five thousand dollars would be a more reasonable request, especially for rubberized mulch.
Yes.
Good thing on here remind me of something, I'll see if we can add in, I don't think it'd be real expensive, I see where the outside speakers in the corner of the building, it's in Nellahayla, you got down for a thousand dollars, um... There's been a tremendous amount of complaint over the years at Franklin High School, from taxpayers or veterans. Behind the brand stand, where the concession stand is there, Tommy knows, you can't hear one announcement back there. There, and that national anthem starts, and they're hearing that racket from behind there and everything like that, they are incensed about it. And it, it would seem like to be a very low cost to get a speaker set, you know, speakers going that way instead of just this way, where they know it, but they're really, really upset by it. And that comes up year after year.
Can I say this, Coach?
Yeah.
The other good news we got, and I think, well, I can't... Can, go ahead, can I interrupt for a second, Coliseum Schools, that's something you talk about in, in closed session?
We have a closed session matter, uh, but I can, the update on Coliseum Schools that I have is very brief, uh, for open session.
But I guess where I'm headed with that is, we expect to sell that this coming year, if at all possible, and we're gonna have some funds available to do things with. About seven thousand pounds, what I say there?
No, sir, I thoroughly expect it'll be sold sometime in the next couple of months.
So, I think we could have some additional funds to do some things with.
I just wondered if it's just another thousand dollars like these are here, just to get something facing out there.
That's a thousand dollars to do that with.
Well, I think he priced the two horns at Nellahayla for two thousand, it's gonna depend on the wiring, the more you're talking about doing. I've, I've missed that.
It'd just be right opposite the press box, I think.
Yeah, just kinda right off the press box, facing...
It, it does, but then, yeah, but those horns have to be put up, and then, that wire has to go all the way back to the console, which is in the office. So, you got a long run of wire.
Yeah, so it'd be cheaper at, uh, at the Staglin Horn, what I'm seeing.
Oh, definitely, oh, definitely.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be anything to add a speaker to the backside of the press box, would it?
Well, you still gotta get that, that wiring back to the console at, at the principal's office, or else.
No, he's talking, he's just talking about for the, uh, national anthem, at the football field.
Okay, we'd probably, yeah, we'll have to look at it and see.
I think we have to do that for it, I think we have to come back out of, I think it's very proper.
We're talking about anything coming out of the press box, right?
Yeah, that's something Cartoon J, 'cause otherwise it shouldn't be like, that's not what we call a priority.
And, and Mr. Chair, you're quite correct, I do think we ought to take that into account, is that, I'd be very surprised if by the start of the budget year we rid, have all the proceeds from this, of course, that's the last one you've got to sell.
But that's all right, we'll, we'll be, just end you with that one, let's get it to you. So, we're saying put five thousand dollars for mulch, Dr. Baldwin?
Yeah. Especially considering that that was a completed request that went to the county commissioners.
And can we put a request to Tim, Mr. Baldwin, to check into that?
Oh, yeah, I think he will do that, yes, better, of course. And we'll have some more classes at that. Angie, where were we at with the ones that we talked about, the bleachers, gym floor cover, what I had? Just the net, the big one was seventy-five, I had seventy-five and seven. Seventeen hundred, thirteen thou. Ten thousand, uh, Southmacon. And without any security cameras, then five thousand for mulch. Did I miss anything? That's what I had highlighted, what, and then we'll come back and look at the cameras, she says this, correct?
I, I had what you had.
Okay, that's what we talked about, that's five hundred and eleven.
And then we'll go back and total up all these people.
Yeah, now, if you would, run a total form for the cameras.
Did you guys not do the generator?
No, no, we passed it.
So, just security cameras, that's what we're doing?
Right.
You got six thousand dollar valley, five thousand at making middle school. Eleven thousand at Nellahayla.
Four thousand here.
Four thousand.
Uh, yeah, but, is that, we talked about Union Security Cameras, is that gonna be in the QZAP or...
Yes.
Okay.
I think, you know, that's, that's, so that's part of that question with that seven hundred fifty thousand dollar value, you know, if we don't get the QZAP, we don't really have a bind, if we can get it. Look for some serious, they, they really need cameras out there, um, and I guess we didn't have a contingency, we don't have the QZAP.
Some seats still.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, four thousand here was the last one, then I'll count Union, that's twenty-six thousand.
Okay, that's cameras, correct? Moving to the final thing. Cars, other things, we got driver's ed cars?
Yes.
It doesn't, I think we had that as a priority, two of the county cars.
I'd say put the driver's ed car in there, and the, the contingency, or like Mr. Baldwin says, just put on there, if it does not continue, then we put it into our fleet.
Correct. Box truck, I'm assuming that's a maintenance request.
At the box truck, we got the nineteen ninety-two?
Yeah.
Uh, I think, uh, it, it's, the floor inside the box, uh, we have to be careful with what we put in there because you can see the highway underneath you, inside the, the box.
Some extra ventilation?
Emergency, yeah, emergency. It is, it is used almost daily for deliveries, uh, Kim's gone, but Kim relies upon Ernie to take stuff from out of the coolers and freezers here and deliver them to the schools, uh...
How much is that?
Got twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight thou.
I think we should ask for, I mean, I tell you, one of those, with, open to the highway, I mean...
That's way it sounds, it's, it's cap and chassis, it's just repairing the floor and reusing the box.
For what, son, he dropped it off?
It's a, you, you cap, you, you cap the chassis, we'll take the box off.
That's what we purchased, we don't have any.
And repair the box, and, and risk all the box.
That's, that's the cost of the chaff and cast, and then, do we have vehicles of moving the box on to it without any additional cost, or no?
Yeah, we'd do that, twenty thousand Randy, we'd get that.
So, that would be just essentials of a name. Escavator, what is that for?
That's, that's a wish.
Thank you. Maintenance trucks, we just replaced two fairly recently, are these trucks that are dangerous to drive in?
You replaced two for the bus garage, and we've not had any in several years, we've got one that's just about late, yeah.
Oh, Randy, sure.
How did it work out that we didn't, I thought, how did we go one place versus sharing, that's a good question?
Because, if I'm not mistaken, and Mr. Baldwin, I'm sure will come in there, it was some kind of, we got, did get an extra deal because of how it worked out with how we purchased one or another, and it was something that we needed anyway, but wasn't there an extra deal in that?
I, I know what you're talking about, but I don't, I think that was actually my transition to those.
I think you're right.
These are Galatra, that's...
Yeah, I thought, after we were, we had, we upgraded, we, what was it, it was a state truck, state purchased that truck, we upgraded to the board of, we had the board of drive.
Yeah.
That's what it was.
So, you're talking about one truck, Stacy? Something, Tracy, sorry, I'm having a hard day.
That's just what we asked for, yeah.
And that would be, the one truck, three, would be thirty-two thousand dollars?
Yeah, you have to leave them off, you know, it's got the, the two boxes.
Two boxes of stuff, activity bus, I thought we pretty much filled our needs for activity buses.
You have one sitting on the side of Robert Seneca, though, right?
Right. We totaled one in yesterday.
How many of them?
I don't know, Randy had to be here, it's just that, if you look at the, at the buses, and you're trying to rotate them and keep them firing reasonably, uh, I'm not sure how old, but, well, I mean, but Randy's saying that if we, we need to keep that rotation going so that we're moving the old ones out and keep them, so that's his desire.
And we're all over the road with that, I mean, we're, wherever we're at, Colossi Den, Robles, or Seneca.
Denver.
So, I don't think, I mean, I don't, Mr. Birdlove, I, I think that we should at least put that on there because it is, it is a need. And whether they turn us down or not, but I do think that they should be aware that we need that. And it, it becomes an issue when we need six of them at one time.
I agree, but let me finish you this way, right now, if we start talking about all the vehicles we're talking about a need for, we're talking about eighteen, fifteen, we're also talking about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in addition to what we've already got. Which, my math is, that's about, we're right at a hundred and ninety thousand, the other allotment's correct?
Yes. Well...
And that doesn't, and then the other allotment I'm talking about doesn't include cameras.
Well, I think the cameras are very important, I don't know, I, I mean, driver's ed, I mean, we've pretty much established, we need it, if we don't ask for the activity bus, it's gonna happen all of a sudden, we have to ask for three of them, I know.
Right. No, I understand, I'm just, I'm just going out to figure, if we're trying to talk realistic in what we feel like we shouldn't do, and I'm just refreshing everybody's memory about how much if we, how much of those vehicles, so we don't have to cross off as other two cars, and the excavator, that would be why. Eighteen, twenty-eight, thirty-two, and eighty-five.
When's the last time we replaced any car, Mr. Baldwin?
Forever. We haven't done since...
Well, the driver's ed car's a two thousand and eight.
All right, so the vehicles we're talking about, we're talking about eighteen for a driver's ed car, a box truck with twenty-eight, maintenance trucks, it'd be thirty-two, eighty-five, it would be seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Mr. Birdlove, you got a question?
Yes.
Yes. When y'all referred to the one you totaled in yesterday, was that the, the information that we got from Renee?
Yes.
Yes.
Four divers, or driving team?
Mm-hmm.
Was that a sixty-six passenger activity bus that was...
That was, that was the, the, the small, well, it was a small activity bus, uh, that's got a handicap, uh, goer on the side of it, and so that was, was the thirty-six passenger that, that, uh... And the reason that they're, they're using just a, a bus with this small number, that is that the school board, and some in the past, has said that, you know, we should not be using county cars to, to go to events like that, and need to be in a bus.
And we don't have any smaller ones for this.
I, I don't think you can, you can have an activity bus that's small, we, we had a van, uh, for a while in the nineties, but that was, for insurance purposes, we couldn't transport students in those.
And how, how would you house?
I think if you're gonna transport students, it's required to be a, a C E L in a commercial bus. And otherwise, we can give them permission to go, be transported by parents or what have you, but... That's probably as small as you can get, that's probably, that's probably a thirty-six, what'd you say, for those?
Well, we, we cannot, we cannot purchase a bus like the one that was privately purchased in house.
Donate.
Uh, donate, because it is not accessible for us, uh, to buy those.
Angie just gave me some interesting information, she said, as of March, we had fourteen bus, activity buses? And five of those had less than than a hundred thousand miles on it?
And the rest of them were over a hundred.
None of them was over a hundred, but if we've got that many, do we, is it a priority that we add another one?
We're not adding, we're, we're gonna take one out of service.
That's it, so, we're, but we're taking, talking about asking eighty-five thousand dollars, take one out of service and add, so we're still talking about, and we have a fleet of fourteen now. I guess I'm questioning, is that as high a priority as some of the other things we're talking about, Fluddery?
And I'll say what my answer is.
I, I guess the question is, how much over a hundred thousand miles do we wanna go in that activity bus?
You go two hundred thousand. But, but right now, what the, what the state is saying on yellow school buses, is that yellow school buses, they'll replace them, you have to have twenty years of service or two hundred thousand miles, and then, and then you can buy it for replacement with the state.
We'll never get twenty years on that.
How many miles does the one that...
Well, yes, we're just, we'll never get two hundred thousand miles on it.
We had to have Randy here to answer those questions, I don't have that.
But I'll, I'll bet you this, a twenty-year-old plus here is gonna be in far worse shape than a bus in, in Charlotte or Durin County, just flat and straight.
I want to move on, but... Out of fourteen buses, I see some very low numbers, do we ever get to the point where we don't have a bus? That, based on the, on that, where we're trying to serve all the schools and do everything? With fourteen, do we ever hit the stage where we didn't have a bus for some, for one of the schools to use, I see now, how does that happen? Yeah, that also comes back to the field trips that were proven, which we were gonna have to look at hard, a little bit more tough, tougher next year, I think.
I agree with you, I mean, elementary, I mean, these kids never get out of Wayne County if they don't throw.
I'm not...
And Linda does a very good job in assigning those buses.
If, if y'all wanna move on, up onto another item right quick, Randy will be here within the next couple of minutes.
That's kinda, we're trying to get this out of the way so we can get into our closed session, and get everybody out of here. So, that, here's where we're at, Angie, correct me if I'm wrong, out of the first category that we highlighted, we had seventy-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. The second section, outside the cameras, we had a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And the final vehicles excluding the bus, we had seventy-eight thousand dollars. And that totals... Two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars excluding the bus, correct?
Yes.
And that, does that include the cameras?
Yes.
All right, so we've got two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars allotted outside that activity bus now, including security cameras. Is there anything that we missed that we felt comfortable submitting to that figure? I mean, I'm gonna look under everybody, 'cause I, I pop way too much.
I know it's way less than seven hundred thousand, as I asked last year.
Can I ask a question, a little off topic, how, I know that Highlands received, has received a significant donation from the community for stuff, for their athletics. How, does that have to get, come through you guys, I mean, like, I know you're not gonna turn it down, but like, what they plan to do?
The way that we're gonna handle that, um, and is the right way to handle it when you have an organization that is gonna hold funds and they are volunteering to come and perform the work for you...
and they are volunteering to come and perform the work for you, is that the board will approve it and authorize them to go and do it. But that way, it's not funds that have to come through here, but it keeps the benefit of the board approving and keeping active.
And I, what, your stuff?
The reason why I ask, while signing a lot of money, I just didn't know if the concession stand was included in athletics that they were upgrading already, that they had planned to upgrade. Their concession stand door, I don't.
That's in the gym, I think most of this.
Okay, I didn't know if it was outside concession or inside.
I guess my question is, that's where we're at, did we, is there anything, if we've had a chance to review it, that's glaring, that someone feels we ought to go back and revisit? I had seventy-eight four on renovation, and then you told me, then you had one eleven on the second, and twenty-six on cameras, then we had on vehicles seventy-eight thousand dollars for excluding, without that activity bus. Two ninety-three, four. Okay, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, not one question or point, it's just to make, I think it needs to be made clear, the county, there are some of those items for Union that are either or. We're gonna address, you know, address them through a QZAP process, and those will come back off, it's just up to them which, which direction we should go to fund them.
But there's really nothing in there about two ninety-three, four.
Or for Union, right.
Right.
I'm waiting to see that, because we may have to come back to that, but again, I think we're gonna have some other funds coming in that we got access to, so, that's, that's my fault. I repeat my question, did we miss anything that any board member feels we ought to readdress?
I don't see anything currently on there, but as we all know, in capital outlay, sometimes it comes throughout the year, that we're nervous we foresee that.
I'd ask the question about, could we ask for, just a reserve? Now, I think I was told we could not do that, is that right? To add to, correct my memory. I think one time I asked a question, could we ask also just twenty-five thousand in general contingency, in capital outlay, to come back, but if you said it again, I was told we could not do that.
Well, and that's a possibility, and I do not know this, but it is a possibility that could change because of.
As well, though, the county, let me say this, the commission's always been very good, if we have an urgent need, when we go back to them, they have never said no, so. And that's, that needs to be in the back of our heads, they've always been very, very good to address our concerns and needs.
When we had the facilities meeting last week, there was a lot of talk about the drainage there in that parking lot with the sink holes and everything. Where is that gonna fall in our asking?
That, I think we'll talk a little bit about that, we're talking about real estate, closed session, we'll look at our options there.
What is yours, what, I'm sorry?
Talking about the cost of drainage at the student parking lot.
Sinkholes in there, they might wanna swallow somebody up any time now.
Stephanie, we have the drainage systems put in there years, who knows how long ago it was, and it's basically falling apart, but I think, then we find a car hood over top of, when we did it one time, a car hood over top is the layer to keep, anyway, it's, it's ancient, it's falling apart. We have an ongoing issue there, but we're also gonna, to even address it, come on, we started, and we have no way anymore to get into.
But let's see, rip up the football field and get drained. But just to clarify, we can't really discuss that.
Discuss right now, just as, so if I'm moving on.
They're legal questions.
I go back to my original.
But what we're gonna discuss is a pile of that.
Okay, so we're at, we're at, yeah, I'm gonna throw something in here, Missy says she's gonna stomp my foot if I don't get it started. We're talking about right now, without the activity bus, two hundred ninety-three thousand four hundred dollars, total, if we miss an item, we're capped on it.
And that does not, I think, it was turned out, that doesn't include any requests from the academy, and if we don't get the QZAP, we'll have.
We know that.
And that would be one of the things, that they may be more inclined for, you know, because it is a tremendous safety issue. If we don't have them, that are, you know, the more that we get with high mileage, the more the safety issue, right, with the brakes and everything, driving the mountains and all like that, would they be more sympathetic to that than not, you know? I only just say no.
Well, Coach, here's my thought, I think that, personally, and this is just me talking, y'all know, I'm very vocal. The items that we've gotten in two hundred ninety-three thousand, if looking at the list Angie just gave me, we have buses there that have low mileage on them, activity buses, and I would think that we could hopefully allot those for the longer trips. To me, the things we have highlighted takes a backseat to another activity bus, that's just how I feel. For looking at priority, 'cause what happens is, when you submit it, correct me if I'm wrong, Angie, once you submit, they will tell us what they're gonna finance and what's in there, is that right?
I do, I do think that it's on the horizon that we're gonna have to.
Have to have one, right. But when I compare the need for an activity bus for another car, it, to me, that pales in comparison, and based on what Tracy's having on a box truck, if we're driving that, that's dangerous. And, uh.
I'll pass to your experience.
Right, and same thing with, you know, that, it's just, if we didn't have fourteen buses, I'd be singing a different song right now.
And Randy gets here with a little bit more information about how many breakdowns we've had, and that's what.
I think it's what Billy probably did, and that's gonna go back to you, so you're gonna have. In the meantime, in the interest, we'll, let's come back to that, so, what I would suggest we do is, let's go ahead and vote to approve this, what we have, and when that's said and done, then we'll, we'll consider Randy when he gets here, that way we can move on in our, our discussions. Or we'll wait, or we'll wait till he gets here, I just hope that's the board's discretion. Someone tell me your preference.
Do you have something else to go to, till we?
Sometime we're gonna take a bath. I may be the oldest one in here, but I get older, I know, but they're, they're.
We have a motion, and right now, we're gonna, we're gonna approve two hundred ninety-two thousand four hundred dollars, capital outlay submission to the council, we have a second, you're in the discussion. All in favor, someone saying aye.
Aye.
At this time, usually Chairman's brought in, we are taking a break until Randy gets here to help relieve distress in our city. Well, just a, 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 we're gonna call us back in open session, we didn't make one, I think, motion to correct, the last motion we had as far as the figure goes, so, Missy?
I wanna make a motion to correct from the two ninety-three four hundred to three twenty-eight one hundred.
Right, sorry, we just had to miss, I was throwing signals at Angie, and she's.
Three twenty-eight, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred dollars.
So thanks for doing a motion to correct, just a corrective motion to bring us that, the figure actually requested for capital outlay is three hundred twenty thousand one hundred dollars. I think Mr. Taylor, you second the ruling motion, so we have a second. All in favor, someone saying aye.
Aye.
You opposed, so moved. We have Randy here, so while we guide him before we move on, quickly, the discussion we had was the need for another activity bus, Randy?
Desperate. I mean, Randy, we have, um, right now, we got three buses that's in the nineties, we got one is twenty-three-year-old, and a twenty-year-old bus, and an eighteen-year-old bus. The twenty-three-year-old bus has got a hundred and eighty-five thousand miles on it, with, probably just this year alone, we've already spent five or six thousand dollars in repairs on it. And then we got the twenty, the twenty-year-old bus has got around a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And, I mean, the newest bus we have right now is the brand new one we bought, I guess, two years ago, which is at Nantahala. That's a two thousand fourteen, I mean, that's a little bit high, but we bought it in two thousand thirteen.
So I would say, Jim, that we should take a look at that again and put that on there, due to.
Do we wanna put it as our total, or put it as a separate item?
The only reason I would possibly say separate item is because they're gonna have to stray out, say, no to an activity bus. And athletics is extremely popular, um.
Plus the trips, right?
Yeah, plus the trips, and I do think, you know, everyone has talked about athletics actually helps academics.
And Randy, are we, is it fair to say we're headed towards a situation where, you know, they don't replace it this year, but the ministry might need two?
I like, if we don't get at least one, then probably the next year or two, we're gonna have to have at least two.
So, pretty much on a, on a year, on a rotational basis, about every year?
Yes, it's nice, I mean, it really, it's good if you can do one a year, 'cause we have about sixteen of them, so.
I think it's kind of fourteen, is one of the reasons I was asking the question, we had fourteen buses, how pressing was this need?
Like, well, Tuesday night, I had to go to Clemson, South Carolina, one of them.
Then which bus was that?
Um, that's eighty-one oh five, it was a two thousand two model bus we had.
And I will say that we ended up, and I'm sure we are not the only ones, I just can go with us, we ended up having issues with our bus, because we kept it for so long, that I was calling our superintendent at midnight, and I'm sure he was calling you, because I was not happy that my child was crossing across at Colossi Dam in front of him, it was very foggy, and they were having to unload the bus, we kept it for so long, until I was, you know, I was extremely concerned about them crossing over the road, unloading and taking them home, and not even in a bus, we ended up just unloading them when we were over there, so, we did keep the buses, but I think we continued the hurdle, and it got us there, but not, it didn't always get us back, so, I mean, I just think we, it runs into issues when we don't, so I would say put it on an extra line item, and that's just my opinion, and we all have a vote.
I'm waiting on the motion.
A line item, that way it's absolutely turned down.
You can always use the selling point that county, or county, community organizations use your buses.
So I'm assuming you just, compassionately, you actually had, had us your motion, that we put, we submitted to the county commissioners, an additional item of eighty-five thousand dollars separate for another activity bus, is that right?
That would be correct.
To have a motion that we submit as a separate item in addition for eighty-five thousand a bus, I think I have a second. All in favor, someone saying aye.
Aye.
You opposed, so moved, thank you, Randy.
Can we get Randy to, when we do that, submit it as a separate item, with Randy's?
We might take him, when we go to the commissioners, we can make our formal presentation, we may take Randy with us, there you go, that'd be good.
It's better than Gordon Thompson.
Moving on then, Coliseum School, is there something you'd talk about, open?
Just to inform the board, I had, put this on the agenda, just on the chance that we would have a final, uh, high bid, un, uh, upset bid to approve, we do not, we have recently obtained another upset bid that will advertise beginning, uh, January twenty-first, it's next Wednesday, that period will run through February second, and so, and that current bid is ninety-nine thousand.
Right.
That's, that's where we stand at. And that's all I have for that.
We're talking, we're, we're trying to get to the, sorry, what I talked about, I'm not rubbing into this. Any other things that come forward going to executive session? If not, every motion, or action, if you could give us the reason we're going to consider it a, executive closed session, please?
The purpose is the one laid out, U S one forty-three dash sixteen, four one one eight, free to consult with an attorney, employer, or a parent by the public body in order to preserve the constitutional privilege between the attorney and the public body, which is hereby a condition.
I make a motion to go into an executive session for the aforementioned reasons that Mr. Randy said.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor, someone saying aye. Aye, you opposed, so moved, before I get out to the kitchen, guys.
You can say that all day.
I'll have action in my defense, I'm trying to prove we got.